Let's call this bad Larry to order at seven P M.
Seven o'clock, Mr. Chair.
We'll call it to order, the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Board Work Session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, four, five.
Who do we got, Mr. Rug?
We've got seven members here and we get Tony and Ryan Aldenets, so you can appoint them to vote for Ian and Jason.
I don't know that we have any voting tonight, so would there be a, an appointment necessary, Ms. Karen?
Not necessary, no voting, no decision making, this is simply a public meeting where we will go through our work session.
Wonderful. All right, well, the floor is yours.
All right, just give me one second. Are you, you good with, so, let me back up, on the agenda, we have two items for the work session, the P U D ordinance discussion and the Heritage Commission discussion. Do you care the order, do you want to keep it P U D first?
Take them right like that.
So I can't take full credit for putting together a PowerPoint, but, because that was Lynn's suggestion.
So is that a compliment or a criticism?
Tell me depending on this looks. So.
Helped his animation.
There's not.
She didn't answer.
No, it was a good idea. Hopefully, hopefully this will be easier to receive as far as information goes, so.
Well, it's, it's just nice, something to look at.
That's right. Just to recap while I try and pull everything up. So we're in the midst of updating our Planning and Development Ordinance, that's section five point two of the Londonderry zoning ordinance. We've had one work session so far back in October, at which staff presented some initial amendments to you all. You provided some really good feedback, and so this draft two, if you will, is intended to reflect that discussion and that feedback. So I will go through a few slides here, just summarizing exactly that. And hopefully you all had the opportunity to read the actual document. So after I give the brief overview, we can get into the weeds of the document, should that be necessary. And go from there, Mr. Chair, as long as you're good with it.
Yeah, you're good.
All right. So again, just as far as why we're doing this, so as we've discussed, the current ordinance, and this is, I should say, this isn't just my professional opinion, this is based on feedback from both the town council and this board, but it's, obviously it's outdated, it lacks some significant criteria with respect to the mixed use aspect, specific objectives, things of that nature. We wanted to align more with our master plan that's currently being updated and just make things more clear overall for both the public staff and the board with respect to reviewing these P U Ds. So that's the intent as to the why behind we're doing this. Think I just covered this, so align with statutory requirement for innovative land use. Again, enhancing that public participation, strengthening the mixed use and housing diversity. Everything you see up on the screen. So to point out what hasn't significantly changed, so the P U D ordinance itself, that's a, it's voluntary. P U Ds are not a mandatory requirement, if somebody meets the criteria within the ordinance, they have the opportunity to apply per the regulation. It's intended to allow for that flexibility, but again, in this update, we're hoping to make it more structured. This board retains its discretion with respect to review of P U Ds. And we're still following the standard hearing and noticing processes per statutory requirements. And I would add, and then some, meaning we've added some additional meetings and noticing requirements. So the major changes in this update would be the new track size. And I'll get into the details of that once we get into the document itself, but the initial size and the current ordinance, the current track size in the ordinance is a hundred contiguous acres. As we discussed last time, there's a proposal to decrease it to be fifty contiguous acres in the A R one zoning district. And then twenty contiguous acres in the other zoning districts, so everywhere but A R one. And I do have a map for you all that I'll put up a little bit here to give you a better visual of what that looks like. Again, I have to credit Lynn, he asked for that. We expanded the purpose and objective section pretty significantly. Again, we made the conceptual consultation with this board mandatory, that's something that was optional before. And then expanding the, the opportunity for public input. We've added a pretty comprehensive checklist in addition to just the ordinance itself, there's a supplementary checklist that hopefully provides additional clarity, mostly for staff, I suppose, in this instance, to make sure everything that's required has been submitted. We've added the density bonus option, that's the table that again, when we get into the document itself, I'll go through. Some walkability, sustainability and open space standards, traffic fiscal environmental impact requirements, those did exist before, but again, we've expanded those further to hopefully be more clear. And then this board suggested, I believe it was at the last work session, some phasing requirements. And some sequencing, what I mean by that is additional language to essentially require the residential portion of the P U D to be at a certain stage before the commercial aspect can begin. So again, recapping the density bonus framework. So the six dwelling units per acre, that's the baseline density. This is what the density allowance was in the, or is in the current ordinance. But we've allowed for bonuses for particular areas that we're referring to as affordable, and that should just say affordable housing, not workforce. Open space preservation, sustainability practices, and then public amenities and infrastructure, and then integrating mixed use. So again, if you meet certain criteria that's outlined in the draft ordinance, you can receive up to a twenty-five percent increase in your density from that initial baseline. Substantial community benefit requirement, so this was a big part of our discussion at the last work session. So the key takeaway, at least that I heard from the board, was that you want it to be a requirement that the, a developer applying for a P U D must provide a community benefit, not just provide it in order to receive the density bonus. And if I recall correctly, you wanted that requirement to be specific to the public infrastructure. So that is reflected in this draft two document, that at least was my intent. So we can go through that and make sure that I didn't miss anything in that update.
Do you want us to ask questions when you come across them, or do you want us to just?
Anytime you like, you let me know.
You're good, this is a wide open discussion here, so talk freely.
So I like the idea. But I do think in that section you just referenced, I think it's five point two point two B, higher quality of measurable public debt benefit. I would suggest that there's some definition regard, regarding what that is. Because otherwise it's, it's completely wide open, so.
What were you on Giovanni, five point what? Five point two point three?
It's a, if I'm referencing what Kelly was saying correctly, I think it's five point two point two B or five point nine or something to that effect. Have it here, but I do, I do remember what, in theory, what she's saying, the higher quality, quality measurable public benefit. And in, I guess what I'm saying is, is that it would be really nice to have some sort of.
Definition as to?
Definition, you know, minimum, minimum, like, what does a facade look like? What's the, you know, maximum surface parking area? What are your design criterias, what's your? Something that's not as ambiguous as just, blah, you know, like, we're just gonna rate you on your, because that could work two ways, right? Be like.
I agree.
If we don't define it, somebody's gonna accuse us of, well, we like that guy, we don't like the other guy, or.
Yeah, I agree.
The other girl.
I think we gotta be exact on the definition, you know, because it can be, even the wording can be, people can interpret it one way or another way, and that leads to confusion.
But the, I, I think the whole purpose of reorienting the P U D is to get people to pursue development in a different fashion that's creative and, and benefits both the environment, the water, the the land use, things to that nature. But in order for somebody to make this jump, this, this, this leap, it's gotta be, you know, it's all based upon, there's a lot of money that goes upfront in defining this. I mean, somebody's probably spending, a developer is probably spending seventy to a hundred thousand dollars before they even come in to say, what do you guys think, you know? And then on the flip side, we keep on talking about making housing affordable, you know, so it's like, you gotta have some parameters, so somebody can make a calculated risk, like, you know, I can't accomplish that, or I can't accomplish that, or I can design by their standards, and that's, that's what I'm saying, you, you wanna kind of?
So I guess my question would be, well, it sounds like maybe defining each one of the items in the density table, because to measure the public, or to define public benefit, essentially you need a metric to, to measure. So. We, we do, to a degree, define each of those community benefits, if you will. But I, I think maybe what you're ultimately getting at is some type of way to measure it, am I?
Yeah, yeah, like, like if you plan by these standards, you're, you're accomplishing what we have in our mind to say it's a, it's a public benefit.
So is this table with these criteria and standards not what you're looking for, for a definition of each of these benefits?
Do you think they're definable to a developer?
The top one's certainly measurable, that's a, that's an easy pass fail.
I think the second one is too.
But I think some of that comes out in the discussion with the town, which should ultimately happen first with the, with just the planning department. Am I wrong, Giovanni, doesn't that usually come up?
Usually it starts with staff, you know, somebody contacts us and says, we have an idea.
Right.
We have the initial.
Right, because my fear with defining it too much is, we don't know all the good ideas, you know. Next year, there could be, hey, we're gonna put in A I power that powers itself, then the whole town's gonna run off it. I mean, I, I have no idea, I just, I don't think it's a bad idea to put maybe examples in there? Is that what you're looking for? I know you're trying to help the developer to.
I'm not trying to help the developer.
No, 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 meaning like, make it more clear, but so.
I'm just saying that if the stated intent is to get somebody designing land or to develop land with whatever our intention of a measurable public benefit is, you gotta tell them what it is.
Right, so what about, what about examples?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, what, what is it, is it like reducing parking lot area, reducing impervious areas, is it, I mean, is, is, is it a architectural design that we're going towards, is it preservation of wetlands that we're going towards? What is it that, that quantifies a measurable public benefit?
So I think, so like I said before, at least my takeaway was that the required community benefit would be the public infrastructure in, I mean, to me, that's, you're either providing that or you're not.
That's the measurable thing?
That's the measurable.
So, so.
Well, which is what we had talked about at the last meeting, was take infrastructure out of, out of the.
Out of the table in its entirety, that was one point I was unsure about.
And make it the requirement to be able to create a P U D, so you need to, you need to show exactly what you have highlighted, you need to show an, a, a significant infrastructure improvement that will benefit, you know, the citizenry of Londonderry as a prerequisite to accepting a P U D, you know?
So I.
Getting the nod.
Yeah.
So the applicant gets the nod, that, what, one of the things that gets you the nod is you've, you've done that. Public amenities, infrastructure, provisions of civic space, whatever.
That's it.
If you have that.
That's the foot in the door.
That's, that's, that's what gets you the, the, the starting, gets you to the starting gate.
Correct.
So I did add language under.
That work for you?
I, I do, but then how do you readjust the other bonuses allowed? I mean, I think that maybe, maybe as opposed to adjusting this chart, Kelly, maybe you could say, you know, the quantifiable, the measurable public benefits will be in accordance with the chart. And the chart also allows you to get whatever bonuses that are allowed. So we're gonna be gearing it around these areas.
So I added language under the, under general considerations and a few other areas, essentially emphasizing the point that public infrastructure is a requirement for a community benefit. But in terms of defining it, it's only defined in this table, so I agree, I think there needs to be more clear reference to either the table or pull it, like you said Jake, and put it as its own.
I think it needs to, I think that needs to be pulled and put as its own thing. You know, and that is what is, shooting at the hip here. Some P U D somewhere in the few places in Londonderry that could accept a P U D, you know, a, a public benefit of it is, you know, through this P U D, we're gonna run water from X Y Z street to A B C street. So we're extending out a, a massive water line that's now giving the town the ability to, to connect the public to it. That's a substantial community benefit, you know?
So we, so.
Putting a few stop signs up, not a substantial community development.
But, but to, 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 to talk about the. Talk about the two things. I actually tried to get a, a stop sign commission started, because we didn't, we don't have enough boards in town, but they, they said no. So, but in my life, if you define it too much, you, you would get boxed into a corner. If it's, if it's too wide, then you, you got nothing.
Correct.
And so.
There's no start point at that point.
Exactly, and so if we, if we can pu, pull it in and, and try and get to the middle somewhere and not get too crazy on definitions and, but crazy enough so that it, it's definable.
Yeah, I think it should be something that is.
I think that's a, I think this is a good start.
Yeah.
I think the recourse always is, is talk to staff, you know, find out exactly what, what it is so that there's communication back and forth, so that they understand and staff understands what they're doing.
I just wanna make sure that, that I'm hearing you guys right, so pulling it from the table in its entirety, right, so it's no longer.
It's a requirement to meet the P U D.
Got it. As far as the definition, I'll add that to the other definitions that we have.
Yep.
Got it, the, I did, like I said, I made references to the community benefit, public benefit, I should make sure that that term is consistently reflected as well, but I made references to that being a requirement throughout the document, this draft. I just wanna make sure that the way it is currently, like the references to that being required is what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a slideshow, we're gonna get into the meat and potatoes of it.
I mean, I pulled up, I can do whatever you want, I put together a slideshow, we don't have to go through it, doesn't matter.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I'll keep going then.
Yeah, we're only on slide four, so we.
Just, just a question before we, so, but that's all negotiable, all this, right? So if someone comes in, and they don't wanna build walking trails, do any of that stuff, but they wanna give us a new school, like, we can take that, right?
Well, it says civic space, trails, transit stops, or other amenities accessible to the public.
Right, okay.
So I think there's a degree of discretion at the board level.
Correct.
To work through that.
Say yes, this is, or no, this is not.
Which is why it's important that we now require that initial concept meeting, so that you can work through.
Correct.
That, and it's not just staff working through that, it's.
I agree.
Both will happen, but that way it's very clear before they're too far into the weeds.
Yeah, and so that's why it says on slide four, planning board retains discretion.
Okay, good.
On the third, third from the top.
Thank you.
On slide, my slide four, I don't know what you have.
I don't know, you're right, Tony.
I see it now. Thank you.
Anyway.
All right.
Yeah, cuz I mean, to your point, well, great, somebody comes in and says, we're gonna build you a school, well, that's great, we got three quarters of schools empty, why do we need another?
More trails. Right, or fire engine.
Okay, so.
All right, so.
Pocket park.
We also added phasing requirements, both with respect to, one is being more clear about phasing overall for the P U D. Obviously, we've only had two P U Ds come through here so far, I think one did, you know, they, Technology Hill, for example, they have a fairly straightforward phasing plan, but the intention with this revision was to clarify that further, that it is a requirement, that it needs to be clearly stated on their site plan, their overall P U D master plan, master site plan. We added additional language with respect to active and substantial development, so that was the discussion we had about, it's twofold, I believe. One is that, so the residential component must reach active and substantial development before the commercial phases begin, unless this board waives it. The other half to that is the overall project, the overall P U D must meet the active and substantial development by the two-year timeframe. So you'll see those red lines reflected in this draft as well. And that definition, active and substantial development, I just pulled it from the site plan regulations. We already had that pretty clearly defined, in my opinion, so that is what you see reflected as that definition.
So I got a question on that. What if a project doesn't accommodate commercial development, are we forcing commercial development? Or are they just not able to even use this as a development vehicle?
You're saying what if they don't have a commercial aspect?
What if it's in an area that just, just isn't?
Conducive to.
Maybe we should change, it should probably state then, commercial and or industrial. The intention of this is to not just have all the residential built out and no commercial or industrial or other use.
Well, I'm just saying, are we forcing commercial development, commercial development doesn't belong? You know, like that traffic flow and that stuff like that, that.
Yes, so, one person's analysis of this is that if you're gonna give all these, all these bonuses, whether it's a density bonus or a green space bonus or whatever, part, part of what's happening here is we know that it costs the town more, costs the town more money when there's a single-family house built than it does for a commercial industrial building. Okay, can we agree on that?
Well.
In, in the long run, because you gotta, because you gotta put kids in the school, okay?
But that's the general thought process, yeah.
So, so, so my analysis of it is, if you're gonna give all these bonuses to, to the developer, then basically the developer has to do the same thing that the Woodmont project is doing and show that they're at least neutral or better from a tax perspective. And one of the ways that you do that is you make them do some commercial and industrial which pays for the costs of, of the density of the housing, which is gonna bring more people, more kids in the school, more traffic, more whatever. You see what I'm saying? And so.
But, okay, so let me counter that argument, a little bit.
Yep.
First of all, you never truly know, Sean can tell you, whether or not a commercial project comes into town and then all of a sudden tries to go for a tax update.
Yeah.
We've seen that a lot in our history, right, you know, public utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So, so they could present a good picture, and then afterwards, it's something completely different. But there's other. Wait a second, there's other interests, interests that may supersede that, like, maybe it's something that is a carbon, conservation type development. That benefits water, or maybe there's something that like, hey, we wanna build affordable, an affordable product, you know? Maybe there's other things, and then all of a sudden you're saying, well, the tie-in is, is a commercial aspect, because we think, and you've seen these developments, like Auburn Road, that they minimize it by putting a daycare in the facility. And, you know, and, and maybe I shouldn't be referencing projects, but they're just, just examples, and it's like, that's kinda, kind of a farce. But to say that that's commercial. And I'm just saying, maybe there's some other priorities that you need to look at and say, okay, you know, we've accomplished some of the other things from like a conservation perspective, from a water conservation perspective, from, from whatever it is. But you're just trying to force the commercial there, otherwise, just say, all these P U Ds should be in a commercial zone, because that would support the commercial.
Or, or just build single-family houses on the land.
Could I just ask, so the whole purpose of the P U D is mixed use, that's the intent, so you need more than just the residential component. That's at least my understanding of why the discussion last time led to, let's make sure that we have something to point to that forces the commercial to come into play sooner than later, if you will. But if there's a consensus that maybe with the amendments to the specific objectives and the more defined harmonious mix of uses, maybe that's not needed, because you're making clear that, yes, the intention of the P U D is to have a mix of uses, so maybe you don't need this component, but I would disagree with some of the points you just made, Giovanni, as far as if they wanna do like a conservation subdivision, well, go on, go to an A R one area, or go to an area where a single family is allowed.
Because you don't need a P U D to do that, right?
Yeah, the whole P U D actually evolved from, I think it goes back to our ninety-seven master plan of village concept type of thing. And we were at that time looking that we could not create a typical New England town, you know, downtown. So let's, you know, and I think at that time, we're looking for something up in the properties to the north of twenty-eight, and then, you know, Rocketham Road, where it curves, where, you know, Bamaath Road comes in. And back in, in there, even though the land wasn't really suited for that, but that was, you know, just looking at the available land. But that's really where the whole P U D evolved from, was the village concept. So that you have an establishment of residences and, you know, businesses, you know, commercial businesses that would, you know, be like, like a, you know, local grocery store, you know, bank type of thing. So you're creating a whole village, so people that live, live in it. So you're creating a whole village, so people that live, live in it would have, uh, you know, connection, that they could get their supplies and everything. Right from there, and not have to travel long distances.
So, I, I, and I'm, and I'm fine with, i- it's just a point I'm bringing up. Cuz, cuz it is a conversation piece, right? Um, and that's what we're trying to work towards, and you're probably right, Kelly, you're a student of this more than I am, but, um. So maybe the fundamental is, uh, needs to be commercial there, but there may be other things, like you say, oh, Jesus, the, the, excuse me. My gosh. This road has been, you know, substandard forever, there's a huge traffic problem here, or there's always been water and sewer that's needed here. Because there's a PFOA issue, and, 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 you know, there might be other things that, like, say, alright, let's give. As opposed to the taxpayer paying for it, maybe there's a way to.
One of the basis for the PUD is that it has to have water and sewer, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
For, for, that's one of the, one of the steps to get in, into the door.
Yep.
But I will say, without name.
Bring it to it.
Yeah, there you go, but, but one of the, one of the concepts that, that, that we did with one of the PUDs in town, and I'm not supposed to name. That may or may not have had, um, a loss of revenue, um, tax exemption, or whatever. Was that, my opinion is, as I read those documents, is that developer. Has to figure out a way to make up that difference, or write a check, because it's gonna be out of balance, or could be close to being out of balance.
They would only have to make up the difference if it does come out of balance.
Correct, yeah, tha- that's what I'm saying, and so that's part of, of a PUD, the, the concept of the PUD. I don't wanna say pay for itself, but help balance the, 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 the costs to the taxpayers. Um, in a, in a lot of different ways, so, just philosophically, that, that's kinda where I come from, um, on, on the whole PUD thing, so.
So just, to bring it all the way, sorry, just to the beginning.
Let me get the job.
Of how you even, just of how you even get to this regulation, is through the statutory, uh, innovative land use controls.
Correct.
Which the intent behind that law is to allow for things like density bonuses, mixed use on one track of land. Without the need for additional relief, so that is why you have, that's why the mixed use aspect is, is relevant in this.
So without going to ZBA, basically.
Right, sorry.
Sean.
So, when I read residential component must reach active and substantial development.
To me, it's backwards, is that what you're gonna say?
Yeah, cuz, cuz Tony was saying, you know, that, that's what gives us less cost to us. The other thing is, I think, we came about with, with this because of Woodmont, for the most part, and people saying, well. You got a bunch of housing there, but you don't really have any commercial, if we limit commercial until residential reads substantial. What we're causing that, and on.
Yeah.
When you do a development, the commercial's harder to draw in, you've gotta draw it in, yes, you've gotta have the people, that might be something for them to draw in commercial. But you gotta start early, too, you go, hey, if you can get a store in there early, if you can get a great restaurant, a great hotel, anything else out there. They should go for it while they can, otherwise, we're gonna be left with.
It's a chicken and the egg.
Yeah.
It's a chicken and the egg.
But to his point, that I think is a little backwards.
Still flip them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt. Well, my note was wrong from the last meeting.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Couldn't we require, like, equal, like, you know, that the, the construction of the residential and commercial. Shall happen in equal phases, meaning they have one, they have one restaurant, okay, well, they can have one residential building.
Well, then that would have to say, we can have fifty residential buildings and fifty commercial buildings, where it might be a hundred residential.
Maybe it's by square foot, I'm just saying, like, that there is a way, because that's what happens a lot, and, and, and we're seeing it in some of the PUDs. Is that some, some phases are, are outweighing other phases, and it's kinda happening. And I think, you know, ten years from now, I think it's gonna be a moot point, people are gonna say, it's beautiful, it's great, blah, 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 but. As we're going through this, and it takes a long time, kinda seems like it's, you know, unbalanced.
Yeah.
And I don't, I, I think it would happen both ways, if you had a bunch of commercial buildings, and people were like, great, we need housing. Like, is there a way to make it more, is there a way to word it, so it's?
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's getting to that too tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you, and then, then they're gonna go somewhere else, they're like, yeah, because I, my housing guy is available for six months, and he's gonna build six houses.
Think about the project, that, think about a project, um, that, that, um, comes into town. That's on, it's on, um, it's on a town line, right, and some of the properties in one town, and some of the properties in Londonderry. And so, all of a sudden, all the commercial industrial, uh, business. And tax base is going to the other town in that project, and Londonderry's gonna get. All the revenue from the houses, which we know costs more money. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's un, unlevel, right, to your point, because we're, we're getting zero revenue. From the commercial part of, or industrial part of the PUD, we're only getting revenue from the housing.
But i- i- if, if the, if the campus is connected and crosses town lines, is there no way for us to legally say, hey, we're gonna s-. The, the two towns are gonna split all the revenues from the entire PUD, no way to do that.
Yeah, cuz it's based on your, on tax.
Yeah, cuz I think the flexibility is, what's gonna govern that, is the economy, economy is, is a certain way, you know, you probably need more residences. Economy goes the other way, residence part just declines, there's ex- empty, uh, empty apartments, let's say. And then you really have to develop your commercial, so it, it goes hand in hand. So at least you want an, enough people there, so that they, uh, will support the commercial.
Right.
So I just, a couple of points to make, this discussion about essentially fiscal impact, what we're talking about. That's already a requirement, I, it's, it's a remaining requirement that that needs to be demonstrated. So you would get your answer as far as what's the impact from a tax standpoint and all of that, and be able to evaluate that. To make your, draw your conclusions from it, as you will, the piece about, I agree, this is backwards, residential. It should be flipped, to say, commercial or industrial. Um, and then, as far as getting into additional requirements for. You know, how much residential or how much commercial, I think that you're, you're again deterring from the intent of. The innovative land use control, the PUD ordinance, which is to allow for that flexibility to get a, you know, a different project. From one that you would normally see that is, when I say normally see, I mean, that's dictated by our zoning ordinance, that's already dictated by a very specific set. Of regulations, the intent of this PUD ordinance is to allow for that flexibility, to allow a developer to. Kind of draw up their own plan, you know, without being so restricted, but I think the current ordinance was not restrictive enough. Didn't have enough guidance, and this board rightfully pointed out, we need to add additional requirements. To clarify that, not only for you, but for the applicants, and I think that we're. We're doing that with these amendments, but I, I would say, and Tony said this already, but I think you're getting into narrowing it too much. If you start adding those additional requirements.
Well, you brought up a point before, that maybe this isn't needed, because we now cover it in the conditions, the way we put a substantial benefit. So we might be duplicating effort and confusing and crossing and making it a little more narrow, so this. It might be clearer to just have it the other way, and not this included as well.
Yeah, so, back to fiscal impact, how much latitude does this planning board, or future planning boards have? Um, on, on determining what they feel fiscal, what. How much fiscal impact is important, or not important, or what's, you know, I, I can't, I'm having a hard time, but you know, you know what I'm saying.
What authority do you have to say, yes, this is a.
Correct, thank you.
A good fiscal impact, in terms of, I guess, the dollar amount?
Yeah, that, that polysyllabic word, authority, that was the one I was struggling with.
So. You, you do have the authority to decide whether or not the study itself is. Just correct, accurate.
Valid.
Valid, um, I guess it's very subjective, if, as far as what that final number is.
Yeah.
What you think of it.
That's, that's really where I was going.
So there is no authority, if you will.
No line in the sand.
That I'm aware of, at least.
Okay.
Um, again, you're, you should be basing it off of. Whether or not the data that they're utilizing to back up that number is accurate. And the way to, the authority you can utilize to, uh, review that, if you will, is obviously staff reviews it. But you can send it out, and they did this for Woodmont, you can, and we did it for, um, Technology Hill as well, but you send it out to the independent reviewer. So that they can a- assess, you know, the data and information that was provided in that fiscal impact study.
Thank you, I, I think that's an important piece, I think that's, that's important to get close to the front door. So that, so that we know wh- what we got, what, what we can do, what we can't do, how we can do it, because that's. To me, the fiscal impact is one of the most important things, because it affects the tax rate.
Right, and, and.
What are you looking for?
I'm looking for permission to say no, or justification to say yes.
But are you looking for a neutral impact, positive impact, uh, something less than a traditional residential subdivision?
Well, I think the, I think the whole purpose of this is to, uh, be creative and, and attract a hundred acres. Instead of having a hundred houses, let's have something different, let's have something that's impactful, let's have. Let's have something that, you know, uh, that everyone talks about affordable housing, we're gonna figure out what that is in a minute, maybe. Um, um, you know, w- 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 um, work play, um. Uh, shops on the bottom, apartments on the top, which is not allowed, uh, in an AR1, uh, and a bunch of other stuff, you know? So, um.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how, how somebody would be like, okay, so what, what am I aiming for, may, maybe that's already.
That's up to the developer, the developer comes to us and proves.
Yes.
That they're worthy, right, that's, that's their, that's their whole job, is to prove, this is, I got a hundred, I got a hundred acres of land. I'm the developer now, right, I'm sitting over there, I got a hundred acres of land, and I don't wanna put a hundred houses on there. I wanna, I wanna apply for the PUD, and I gotta hit all the benchmarks to prove to the planning board on this side of the desk. That they're worthy of getting a PUD, because they're gonna provide this, they're gonna provide that, they're gonna do this, they're looking for. Um, a density credit, because they're gonna do that, and all, all the things, a- and then you put a bow on it. That presented to us, and we look at it and say, yes or no, and what I'm asking is, on the part about fiscal impact. Is there a line in the sand? And apparently there isn't.
Well, I guess I'm asking the same question, it's like, what's their target?
That's why I asked.
Same question.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but yeah, I mean, it's basically the same thing, it's a good point, if, if someone says to come in, hey, we're gonna build a fire station, and we say, we don't need a fire station.
Right.
Like, well, that's what I'm offering.
Right.
And it's like, can we even say no, they're, they're meeting the guidelines, they're gonna give us a million-dollar fire station, can we say no?
At the planning board's discretion.
We can, cuz that, that's not a.
It's not a need.
And it's not a benefit to the community, cuz we don't need it.
It's, it's zero benefit to the community, so, right there, boom, see ya, you're done.
Maybe, maybe I want one in my neighborhood.
And maybe you don't, but that's the discretion.
That's the discretion.
Okay, cuz that, that, that's always a mystery to me, of, I mean, sometimes we see things, and we're like, eh, but it's like, there's really no basis to deny it. But.
It could, it, it could be.
Right.
Yeah, it could.
I wait for you to oppose it first.
So one more, I just wanna make one more comment about the fiscal impact, so when I said, you, you know, you should, you should be having, and you, we do this already. But staff review it, and then an independent party review it. When a developer, uh, presents a fiscal, puts together the fiscal impact study, there's a variety of different methodology, methodology. Wow, methodologies they can use to, uh, input the data, and then crank out a number. So that's what I mean by, that's the review piece, right, is to ensure that whatever methodology that they proposed. Is being done per, per the standard, like, if it's like a per capita calculation, or whatever, whatever the formula is that they're using. That should be verified, um, so that's, that's the detailed answer to your question, that's, that's what we're looking at. Or, it's essentially, where the formula is accurately used, represented properly, um, so it's not just them punching in a bunch of. Information, I know the board understands this, but just, I know people are gonna watch this, probably, like, it's, it's to, it's a math equation. Essentially, making sure that that is done correctly, that the end number is accurate.
So it's more of defining what the fiscal, fiscal impact is, versus trying to hit a target for a fiscal.
Right, making sure that that process to generate the end number was, was followed accurately.
I don't know if I can figure out how to say this, but I'm gonna try.
Okay.
Um.
Worth a try.
Yeah, so we're, I feel like we're kinda missing the mark a little bit, right? Going back to a couple things, Art talked about a PUD came from the village concept, right? What is villagey about homes on top of businesses and four-story apartment buildings? Nothing, but then it's meeting the commercial aspect, right? Back to his point, why are we gonna jam some commercial thing in the middle of a residential area, so we can meet a requirement?
Well, but there are some people in the community that, that are saying they want that, that they've testified to it, they've talked about it. You have counselors that are saying it, because where they came from had it, and they liked it, um, including sidewalks and walkability. And, um, live, work, stay, uh, concepts, um, I wanna go downstairs, get my loaf of bread and my gallon of milk. Without having to get in my car, um, kinda stuff, that's, that's the villagey part.
There, there's actually.
But it's not.
Yeah, it isn't the typical.
You know what, but, but hear me out.
It's a self-sustaining village, right, so there's a great documentary called The End of Suburbia, which is people are going back to, cuz of the price of cars and gas and all that. Great documentary, right? That everybody, we're gonna go back, like, we started with these little villages and everything, we went out and sprawled, and we got acres of land, and now every, everything's coming back. It's just like the long hair, short hair, the beards, the mullets, there are, they come and they go, so.
Boston's never turning into a village again, I hate to break it to you. They're not putting the expressway back on.
You got areas where, where like, there, there are apartments all, of course, all over, but then you get the, uh, the stores, the restaurants and everything, like on, on street corners. You know, like, Brookline Village, you know, places like.
So, let me ask you this, would this fall under a PUD, you've got a tract of land that's got a hundred acres to it. You've got a developer who wants to come in, they're proposing, you know, I've talked about it a million times, small houses. One to two-bedroom houses, they want, you know, two hundred of them on a hundred acres, and maybe they want. Twenty, forty, five hundred square foot houses on this same hundred acres, and they're gonna have, you know. A nutfield country store somewhere in the middle of it, a daycare somewhere in the middle of it, would you consider that a PUD?
Depends on, uh, what the fiscal impact report says.
Good answer.
The way, the way the draft, this draft is, they could easily have that many units.
I know, but would it be considered a PUD?
Uh.
You know, does it?
That's, that's the board to value.
But that comes back to our discretion.
Yeah.
So we can say, it's great, we, we love the nutfield store and the daycare, but we really need more, we're looking for more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's how.
Cuz to me, that would be like, phenomenal, right? You know, has a very minimal commercial impact, to his point, why are we jamming a market basket off of. I don't know, Danbury Court, since I live on Danbury Court, why would, why would you jam in a market basket at the end of Danbury Court, so we can meet a PUD requirement? Whereas like, let's go back to the village thing, there's no market basket in a village, but there is a nutfield country store, and there is, you know. A daycare, and, you know, maybe a, a very small area of, of commercial, light commercial.
Fiscal impact of twice as many cars, too, that we have to talk about.
Yeah.
At some point, so, you know, so, so you back to that balancing thing again.
At some point, so, you know, so, so you back to that balancing thing again, and that's part of. What this board can do with this new language, that's more restrictive than it was. But not so restrictive that, that it's ridiculous.
Hmm.
And I think the village concept is important right now, cause some people are asking for it, but it's also something, as Ryan said, they come and they go. What if we end up in a, in an, you know, a time when all of a sudden, that's totally out of vogue, and people don't want that, nobody wants to, and then we've got this, and it becomes.
Then we're gonna have some real affordable houses.
At the end of the day, let's, let's talk facts, right? We're gonna make decisions here to build things that people are not gonna like in the future. But we're gonna make the best decision at the time, and what the town needs at the time, so you might not need twenty banks in town. But at the time, we did need it, you know what I mean? Or whatever the situation is.
These decisions are always snapshots in time.
Correct.
At this moment, this snapshot in time is that the correct decision for then, not what may or may not happen in twenty years. Which, because, how, it's not non-predictable.
Let me rephrase that, I think looking twenty years is silly, cause it's, anything will be different, but I think, I'd at least wanna make sure it's long-lasting to make, maybe seven.
Yeah.
You know, when we can.
Yeah, so the, but the, I, I mean, let's be clear too, there's a bunch of catchphrases out there right now, right? Affordable housing, no one knows what it is. Village district, no one knows what it is, and, and everybody has a different picture in their mind of what a village district is, we, we have that right here. Yeah, exactly, we just did it, and so, all these catchphrases that are out there in the community are all different, even though they're saying the same phrase. You know, wh- wh- when I was at the, at the, the, the meeting, the other night with Jeff. Um, where we were putting dots on the, on the maps and stuff, there may or may not have been an argument at my table about. Um, is a street walkable only if it has a sidewalk, or can it be walkable if it doesn't have a sidewalk?
You're on table three.
And, and it didn't go well, and so there was a separation of the parties. And, 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 and so, and so, but that's an, that's another thing.
Yeah.
Well, I want sidewalks, well, wait, you just said you wanted it to stay country.
Yeah.
Sidewalks are city, are they not?
Yeah.
And, and, and that's where it gets, it, a, a vision of someone's country hamlet. Is different from a different person's vision of a country hamlet, and so, what are you really asking us? What do you want us to do? How, 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 how can we, how can we satisfy all those? The correct answer is, we can't.
Right, exactly.
Cause if they come from Ireland, their roads are ten feet wide.
Hundred percent.
So, they, they want a country road, that's a country road, it's not Wiley Hill Road.
Things are close together, like, you know, your, your villages, they get all, all, all the amenities that you need in the little village, so you just gotta wa- walk around, you know?
Hey, we're on slide eight.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanna add to it too, like, what Ra- what Art was saying was that, you know. Where, we modeled it off of, cause I remember that, modeled it off of the North Lunedary and the, the village there. And then to Ryan or Sean's point, things change over time. Back then, you had Jollicar's Country Store, and you had.
Strino's.
Well, you had Strino's, but that wasn't technically.
Come on, don't forget about mine, it's pit stop.
And, and you, yeah, alright, but that was far after that. But you also had the, the lumberyard, and prior to that, it was uh, Ennis Greens. And there was a railroad bed, and so things change, right? So now, Jollicar's is Jock's Flowers, or something like that. The, the area that, you know, you know, is, is, now there's a barber shop, and it, and now. The, the lumberyard is a multi, multi-tenanted building with anything from a masseuse to, you know, what, what have you, so.
Is that where the masseuse went?
Property gets, property, property gets reutilized, and that, that's the same thing with re- with retail right now. You know, retail isn't as popular as it was, so now that you got your bouncy gyms, or you got something else, you know, it's like. To, I guess to Sean's point, is like, you necessarily can't plan for twenty years out in the future, maybe you hit that five-year mark. But then things do get repurposed over time, but Kelly, is there a conservation subdivision in our books?
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, not anymore. It was removed, I forget what year.
Okay, but that was.
Uh, correct, yeah.
But that was to my plan, something, I think you backed me on Jake, is that maybe we should, I know you got a lot of things on your plane, but. Maybe that's something we should look at, because there might be situations where that would benefit the town to. Hit water quality, hit some of these other different things, preserve open space, cause I always thought that it would be a great idea to. Put all your development up front and put the rest of it in the conservation, you know, versus. Being so stringent on our subdivision regulations that we have to create that urban sprawl. Because.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
So. Uh.
I like that.
So Lorden Commons is a, a cluster subdivision, that. Is what we no longer have, we have open space subdivisions, which I actually think is what you're asking me about.
I thought Lorden Commons is open, cause they get that whole big old tract of land in the middle of it.
That broke down the uh, traditional subdivision regulations that create urban sprawl and, and overutilization of land, you know?
Yeah, the whole thing with conservation of land.
Well, let's get to the next slide, so we can.
Alright, so, I think I already stated this, but um. The emphasizing what we're actually requiring for submission materials now, this coincides with the. The, the checklist that will be essentially an exhibit or a supplement to these regulations. We did, it's not that we didn't require these before per se, but it just wasn't. Abundantly clear, at least not in my opinion. And we're at the, what are we doing next? So you're, tonight you're at the review stage. Um, again, this is our second work session, you can do this as many times as you feel necessary. I have projected out two work sessions, a hearing at this board, and then. After that hearing, that hearing would include your, whatever your recommendation is to the town council, the council, as you know, has their first reading. And then their own hearing process, that is when the ordinance would or would not be formally adopted, adopted at that time, so. As far as schedule wise, um. I can pull up the document itself, and we can go through it.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go through it.
So. You want me to field your questions, or do you want me to, cause I had some questions for you too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, work on your red lines, ask us a few questions, obviously, a couple things have changed as we've gone through the slide.
So this is.
Which one is that?
Uh.
Please.
Number two.
Which document, or what page am I on?
In, in my list of things that I have in front of me, which one is it, please?
Uh, two.
Two dot LZO.
The Word doc of the red line.
Is there a difference between the Word doc and the PDF?
One's a Word document, one's a PDF.
Uh, I, the only difference is I don't think that the PDF picked up on my comments.
Yeah, no, it didn't.
Okay, thank you.
You tell me when to go.
Go ahead.
Second two.
So, the section I have up on screen is on page four. And this, we did, we, I believe we've addressed this, this is about the um. Active and substantial development, and essentially, what I heard is I need to flip. Uh, the reference to.
Commercial and residential, yep.
Uh, the other item is, again, I referenced this, um.
There's a red line.
Stating that if active and substantial development has not begun within two years of the approval. Um, that essentially, it, it would expire, um, this board does retain its authority to waive that. Or extend it, uh, but that change is going from, it used to be five years, um. We've, we've lowered it to two years, based on our discussion last time.
Yeah, and I think that, that's, that's an important one.
I agree.
Hmm.
Uh, next, page five, this red line, um. So, uh, referencing back to the, the density bonuses, and then the demonstration of. The community benefit where applicable. So this is just covering that aspect, um, in the. The documents that they need to provide, so this was an attempt to provide more clarification to. Your request to add that community benefit requirement.
So, going back to my initial question, yeah, we gonna make some effort to actually define what those are? So they're somewhat quantifiable, and if we reference the table, or whatever.
Yeah, so. My understanding is that, uh, I should be referencing the table. So, let me back up, I'm pulling the public infrastructure.
Cause that's a requirement.
Adding that to the definitions overall, and then when it's referenced throughout the document consistently. You'll, you know to refer back to the definition section of the ordinance, uh, and then, in addition to that, where it's applicable. And I think it's done already, but referencing the density table.
Is there a way to make, you know, back to the infrastructure thing, five point two point eight standards of development, making that item of the table, its own. You know, you got parking and loading, building height, you know, can A be infrastructure?
Sure.
You know what I mean? And really clearly define what we're looking for, and then the rest of them bump down, so now it is a. It's not just a definition inside of this, it's a legitimate standard of development, or requirement, you know? Does that make sense?
So I'm not sure this is a spot for it, I.
You know what I'm saying, though, yeah.
Like pulling that out very.
Making it its own thing.
As it's required, so I think that falls more within the.
Basic eligibility requirements.
Yes.
So you have a note there, um, except for affordable housing?
Yes, thank you. So I think I'm clear on what you just said, Jake, yeah?
What's up?
I think, so you want me to pull the.
Yeah.
Public infrastructure definition and requirement itself onto, into the specific.
Correct, into basic eligibility requirements.
Got it. My comment, um. I had a note from last session where we, we talked about affordable housing. And the density, and my takeaway was that you didn't want to necessarily restrict. Affordable housing to that, um, the cap that's articulated in here, you wanted to allow essentially. As much affordable housing as they want, you don't wanna limit the density on affordable housing, is what I had in my notes. So I just wanted to confirm that I had that right.
Can, can you think of any downside to allowing that unlimited?
Well, what I wanna be clear, so affordable housing, we're not talking about workforce housing, and that distinction is, is made in here, and it is defined.
What is the definition?
So it's thirty percent of the gross household income, that definition comes from HUD.
HUD, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the standard definition.
Um, to your question, Tony. Downside, I mean, again, I think it's a subjective thing, but um.
Well, as a planner, as a, I mean, this is what you do, what, what? Have you heard of any negatives?
Honestly, I, I don't, I don't see it as a negative, I mean, I, in this community specifically, and at this board. All I hear is that we need affordable housing, but not workforce housing, so. This is a means to try and address that to a due degree. Um. I mean, the, the end number that you're talking about, like, the dollar amount that the rent is gonna be. Yeah, like subjective, I suppose.
It's gonna be high.
Right, so I mean.
Because of this region, it's gonna be high.
Yeah, so I, I think by not limiting it, you're able to meet a greater need, in my opinion. Based on the status of, not just Lunedary, but everywhere now.
So, so when you do that to a developer, having been on the other side of the table. Is, is, my knee-jerk reaction to seeing something like that in writing would be, okay. Then I'm gonna put up two hundred and fifty tract houses.
So I guess. If I think about it more.
Can we say no to that?
It would be a challenge, I think it would create, it has a potential to create a challenge for this board, to your point just now of. If you're then evaluating the mixed, mixed-use aspect, and then we haven't capped a density for affordable. You can use discretion, I suppose, still, but I think it would be more challenging in that regard, cause then the response could be, well, you didn't. It doesn't say I can't exceed.
But they still have to have the substantial community benefit.
Do, so you have that.
Aspects.
But I could just see.
The commercial phasing.
Having no parameter could pose a, a challenge for, for the board to be able to make an ev- an evaluation.
I, I think, I think I, if I was on the other side of the table, I think I could take advantage of that big time, I really do.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, there's no doubt about it.
I don't think that's what the community wants.
There's no doubt about it, this is a bene- this would be a benefit to, to the developer, I mean, that's.
So then we gotta put some sort of a cap to it.
So you can just keep the cap as it was written previously, which is the, um. Uh, can't exceed twenty-five percent above the baseline density, so, for example, the maximum of seven and a half dwelling units per acre. Whereas the baseline is, uh, six units breaker.
I'm just gonna say this though.
Is there a bonus to a developer, if I can build another house and a half, make them affordable, to me, it's not, it's not enough there.
I think that went too far that way.
Yeah, it's not enough meat on the bone.
I think zero rule is too far that way.
Yeah.
And again, I'm saying, let's, let's bring both sides in a little bit, and see where, see what we can come up with. To, to, I, I think we do need affordable housing. But I think no parameters is too much, I think, as it's written, it's too much, so what's the happy medium? I don't know, I, I have no idea, but to your point, I think the way it's currently written, you're gonna get zero affordable houses.
I agree.
But how far do you go? Where do, where do you wanna go with it? What's the number?
So you're, you're saying you think you'll get zero affordable housing because the bonus is not high enough?
Yeah, it's not enough of incentive for the builder to, to do it.
Correct, I'll just.
Can't make any money off it.
Yeah, I'll just build four thousand square foot houses instead, and have one and a half less, but I got three times the money.
You see, what, what the general public doesn't understand, nor should they understand, because. Why would you, why would you know that? But the builder's making X number of percent, let's say four percent. Let's say ten percent for a num- for numbers, ten percent on every house. So if you have to do all the infrastructure, you have to build a foundation, you have to build walls, you have to build a roof, and you're making ten percent. Do you want ten percent of a hundred thousand dollar house, or do you want ten percent of a five hundred thousand dollar house? As a business person, what would you do?
Ten percent of five hundred.
A hundred percent, and so you would, you would put a two million dollar house up, cause I can make ten percent on a two million dollar house.
Correct.
And that's where we're at right now.
Correct.
And the, the general public doesn't understand that, that. A, because of the federal regulations and the state regulations, the planning board and the planning department can't tell a developer. How many square feet you can build a house, right? We can't say, you can't charge more than X number of dollars, we can't say anything about price, that's federal fair housing, that's big boy jail, if you do that. And, and so, and, and, and so. If they're making that ten percent, what do you expect them to do? What, what else do you do? Under, other than the PUD. Density breaks, yes, a hundred percent, and where we're at is.
Seven and a half over six isn't a density break.
Right, and so right now, we've got a, a density that doesn't make sense for a. Right. And so right now, we've got a, a density that doesn't make sense for a developer. But we, and, and we talked about zero for a minute, and so the question is, what's the number? Where, how do we bring it more towards the middle?
Say double the density?
What does that look like?
I don't know. I mean, I think with some planning, you could figure out what that number is to make it. And, and there's a lot of examples out there with it, you know? But I mean, you know, you brought up a point like, you know, developer would come in with tract houses. Well, you're arguing two points. One is like the general consumer is sitting there going, well, we want affordable housing, but we don't like that type.
Right.
And at the end of the day, we're like sixty thousand homes behind in Southern New Hampshire by the year two thousand thirty. And at some point, people need to compromise on what the product is to get, to get into housing.
Yeah, but not in their town. Right, we need it, not here. I'll build it over there. We need it.
Windham's was saying that, and Bedford's been saying that for fifty years.
How's Windham doing right now?
Yeah. Did you, did you read the article? They're in a little bit of trouble right now.
Of course I did.
But let me add another element to this. We wanna attract industrial and commercial because that's high tax basis, basis, but they need the.
They need the housing.
Housing.
Need the housing, need the, the, the people, the workforce, so.
But yeah, but yeah.
It's just, it's a unpolitical, you know, it's, it's a nasty, it's a nasty argument all the way around.
Hundred percent. So let's take it, let's take it one step further. So, what I'm being told is that people can't afford the houses that are being built in London area right now. And yet, the one point one million dollar houses, brand new construction, are selling. So then they are affordable, because people are buying them. So how could you say, how could you say that that people can't afford it when they're selling?
I think there's an age factor to that though, too. I think that's why we're losing a lot of our young people. Our community demographic is getting older and.
Yes.
You know what the average age for the average home buyer right now?
On this board, sixty.
The first time in history, it, it went up to forty years old.
No kidding.
That's, that's the median age of your first time home buyer.
That's insane.
Well, so from year.
Twenty years ahead of the curve.
One to forty, you're, you're creating a rental market.
Yeah.
That's it.
But London area is, is, is a mix of different, uh, econ- economic backgrounds, I guess, or affordability. So I think what people are saying is, is they couldn't afford a house in this town, and their kids can't afford a house in this town. I think that's really where it's coming from. People are having kids, they love the town, they want the kids to stay in town. Kids can't afford to live in this town.
When your average age of your first time home buyer is forty, kids can't afford to buy a home anywhere in the United States.
Oh, maybe with the fifty year mortgage they went.
Oh, then the, then the house caught, don't go there. Don't go there.
I was just kidding.
So, but to your point, in my neighborhood, on my street, I have a thirty-five year old husband, I don't know how old she is, but they just bought a one point whatever million dollar house. They have a small baby, a smaller baby, and one in the oven. And, and so I don't know what to say.
Uh, no.
He can have a good income, that's all.
Yeah, I don't know what he does for work, but.
We still got her to stop the parents, so.
Yeah, all right, let's go. What are we gonna do?
We're not gonna solve all the town's problems tonight.
Back to his point about the whole, the average age of a home buyer now is forty years old. What, what are they buying? There's nothing small for him to buy. It's only.
What the? Under forty's?
Yeah.
Right.
Do you wanna leave the?
But do you make it non-exclusionary, or do you, do you say, okay, we want fifty percent of that, or we want twenty percent affordable housing, or do we want, right now, basically the way it's written, it's gonna, my opinion, it's gonna be zero affordable housing, because it's too restricted.
Is this affordable housing for sale or lease?
I don't think we can.
Could you have a different bogey if it's for sale?
Yeah, now you're getting into what I'm getting into.
Yeah.
You're getting into what I'm trying to get in.
I don't think we legally can.
I'm on, I question that.
Yeah.
Also with affordability.
Into it?
I can, but I do question, I.
We keep wanting to find affordable, but do we, at this point, do we, can we define affordable by square footage? Is that possible? Is that legal? No?
What you can use is the formula that's in the chart.
Yeah.
That's what you can do.
That's the definition.
That's it. That's what you got to work with.
A bunch of hocus pocus.
At the end of the day, if we, we bring it less, we're getting some progress.
But that's what I'm getting at. And the only way to get it less is through more density and smaller homes. Not more density and four thousand foot homes. At the end of the, at the end of the day, if you allow all this density and only let a, you know, it be a two bedroom home, it's only gonna sell for so much. I don't know what that is, but it's not gonna sell for the price of a four bedroom home.
Yep.
That's affordability. Uh, like, how do we put that in a definition and tell somebody to build a bunch of smaller houses?
Manufactured housing.
No.
Well, I, I think honestly, by, by the lot size itself and the density within it, you can't build a whole bunch of units of big house. Like, it just mathematically doesn't work out. So I think that's where we're, we're doing good on this. I just think the number needs to be big enough to make it worth it.
Uh, I don't agree with that at all, because if you go down Massachusetts, they put a five.
Four thousand foot house on a lot this big.
They do, but our, our zoning isn't the same zoning as their zoning and generally.
But you're breaking down zones.
They have zero lot, zero lot lines, like Manchester does, but Lin's been very patient. Mr. Chair.
Lynn, I didn't even see you there looking to talk.
I thought you were, you were, I thought you were ready to say something.
No, no, I just think, uh, this whole thing of affordability is.
Hocus pocus, yeah.
Either increased density or you, and you have to cap the house size as well.
I think you have to do both. Uh, that's the only way to create affordability. I've set it for eight months now.
Isn't necessarily gonna make you an affordable house, it's gonna make it a smaller house.
It's gonna make it a more, it's not, might not make it affordable by definition, but in today's standard, it won't be selling for a million bucks.
It'll be less money than what's currently being built.
That is affordability. And not this definition of thirty percent by whatever eighty percent AMI minimum though.
And if it was me and you could legally do it, I would say there's a different bonus for, for sale product versus for lease product.
Totally agree.
I do think it's different markets though, cause people generally above forty with, uh, uh, you know, an established family and the money to afford it, aren't gonna buy a tiny house. But some of the younger people, or a starter home, they're generally not. So, there's only so many people that are gonna buy that, and there's a smaller number of people, I think, that'll buy the bigger ones.
Well, we'll be able to get people under forty buying a home, so we've created affordability.
Yep, in a market.
So they, yeah, they get their foot in the door.
Created a market. We've created a market. I guess that's what I'm trying to do. Create a market.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the technology of building houses is changing also, so things tend to be more, uh, pre-manufactured. So it's like buying a, like, like buying a kit, you know? You get a wall, you know, the whole thing comes, uh, you know, like a panel.
It's modular.
Sears catalog.
That's Sears and Roboto.
Modular, and there's, there's some in between that too.
So getting back to your point about the, the size. So is there, is there a square footage, though, that you?
Twelve hundred square feet, it's tiny.
So are.
Thirteen hundred square feet.
Say we put a cap on the square footage.
Yep.
Are you then okay with the?
So like, let me ask you this. Go down South Mammoth Road in Manchester. You got Little Cape after Little Cape after Little Cape. What do you think, what do you think the square footage is on those twelve hundred feet?
Twelve hundred.
That's how we create a different market.
I think they're bigger.
Really?
Respectfully submitted, yeah. A twelve hundred square foot unit is, is pretty much a one bedroom.
The only thing I see wrong with this, where this could go wrong, is we might be over correcting on it. Because, okay, let's say we get a couple P U Ds with a bunch of those. Well, what if we start getting a lot of them? We end up with the fifty-five plus problem where we built way too many of those, and now we got them all over the place. Pretty soon we have twelve hundred square foot, way too many.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred square foot houses?
Yes. So, and then we end up with, you know, we want some of them, but we definitely don't wanna make it so it's so beneficial that that's all we get. And then we end up with too many.
So, a- according to Google, uh, tiny houses three hundred, between three hundred and four hundred square feet and, uh, affordable, which is affordable, which is considered affordable, and then affordable houses are up to fifteen hundred square feet. With the common size of affordable plans being between twelve hundred and two thousand square.
Could I build a tiny house here now, on current zoning?
No.
Um.
If it has wheels on it, yes.
So, possibly. There was a recent change of the building code that has a definition of a tiny house that may provide an avenue for that. But we don't have specific zoning that talks about that particular use and where it cannot go.
So my first house in London area that I built behind the gym was twenty-six by fifty-two, thirteen hu- thirteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. It was three bedrooms, uh, one and a half bath, one and a half baths. So the, so the primary, which then was called a master bedroom, but you can't say that anymore, um, had, had a shower, a toilet and a sink in it, in the, in the primary bedroom, and then there was a full bath. Thirteen hundred and fifty-two square feet, twenty-six by fifty-two ranch, two car garage under.
That's your footprint.
Yeah, twenty-six by fifty-two.
So if you build a cape.
Well, a cape is, a cape is, uh, thirty by forty. Twelve hundred square foot first floor.
First floor.
Thirty by, thirty by forty. But the bedrooms are upstairs.
See. I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to blow up the chart, but couldn't we have a separate section to say, hey, you'll get this if. No, where are we going with this, Jake? For this size of a house?
I'm just trying to create affordability.
We, we might be spiraling.
I know, I know we're spinning our wheels here.
Yeah, we just figure out what number we need there. And that would be a good.
So, well, we have Giovanni here. Giovanni, you build houses, correct?
Well, I know, I sell houses.
Sell houses. You don't do any development yourself?
Family members do, yeah.
Okay, any, and I'm just saying, like, what, what would make somebody want to build an affordable house? How can we change this number to make, to entice somebody to build affordable housing? That's what it comes down to, right?
If you could eliminate a lot of the soft costs, um, the engineering, the, the, three years in, in design review and, and to, to the point you get into the ground, um, if you could eliminate those, you'd be a lot further along to affordable housing.
But we can't do that, right?
Well, we could, but.
That's, that's nothing to do with this number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, what on this chart can we change that will entice people to build?
Give, give more density.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're back to the number on what that number should be. It's greater than seven point five.
Double.
Yeah, double.
Double, fifty percent.
I'm good with that.
So if you can put a hundred homes, now you can put a hundred fifty. Right? That doesn't seem unreasonable, no?
So fifty percent for affordable.
Can we ask Kelly and the planning department just to do some double checking?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I need to make an arbitrary decision, just because it sounds good.
Yeah, just so we're all clear.
That number.
I, this needs, I'm, I will be sending this to legal for vetting, once we're at a point where you're.
Ready to legally vet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna.
Once all the ideas are on the paper.
We're not ready for that.
Since we're going, since we're going from, you know, let's double it to no cap to, I'll figure, I'll wait till I have a solid answer.
And if there's any builders at home, if you have any ideas, please, you know, email Kelly Karen. And then let's build townhouses. They're affordable compared to a single family. Not, not, not the ones, no.
One of the things.
Single family they are.
One of the things you can do, Kelly, and I'm sure you know this, but you can see where affordable housing in what towns, it was actually the incentive worked.
Yeah.
And you could make that suggestion too.
And so just.
Know any of them, like?
As far as where I, where did this number come from? It came from the, the APA standards, they're quite, they're they're like general recommendation document for P U D's mixed use developments, and then also we took in information from several other New Hampshire communities and essentially averaged out what they provide for density bonuses. So that's where this number came from. So it's not just an arbitrary number.
Right, but I think we.
You know, does that suit London area? That's why we're having this conversation.
I think we have a unique situation where some towns, I'm not sure they want affordable housing. And, but to be honest with you, and I think, I think we've heard enough from the residents that they want affordable housing, and there are some towns that, that don't, and we want it, and we just don't know how to, we, we know how to do it, well, we just, we're trying to figure out how to entice them. So, yeah, I mean, there are projects on the, on the books now, and we've seen them come before us and, in review stages. I mean, maybe, I don't know, maybe we reach out to them, say, hey, what, what would, what would it take for you to do, make these affordable? And not these gigantic, you know, monstrosities.
I don't know about that.
I'm just saying, like.
So, so this, here's the real problem to that, right? People are crying for affordable housing. The most realistic affordable housing, then again, affordability is also in the eyes of the beholder. The most realistic affordable housing is in the form of, to Lynn's point, townhouses, apartments and all that. Everybody that's saying, I want affordable housing, is then in the next saying, sentence saying, don't build another townhouse.
Yeah, but because some of the townhouses in town are not affordable.
Well, are they more affordable than a one million dollar house on Young Road?
Uh, sure, but, I mean.
That's what I'm getting at, though. It is more.
Even, even some of the apartments are not affordable. It's all, it's all relative.
Market driven, but that's ultimately what I'm getting at.
Makes it difficult, but then you don't know what the legislature's gonna do next year, so.
So we're gonna stick with double it for now, for now?
Yep.
Yeah.
And clearly, we're gonna need another meeting.
That's fine.
We're not gonna.
I also heard that, I thought you were gonna just see where it actually worked.
Yes.
Yeah, like, if we could find something that, you know.
A proven example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where it incited that.
So right now, we're, right now, we're saying, we're saying that only because we'd like some more guidance from your department on what, what is the cause and effect of that, or what are the unintended, unintended consequences of that?
Yep.
Correct.
Got it.
Thank you.
Just to know, I intentionally skipped track size, I'm saving that for last.
Okay, I didn't even notice.
Uh, so this section I have up is with respect to the phasing and substantial completion requirement. Reiterating that, again, I need to flip the reference to residential to say commercial.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Again, rea- this next portion reiterating the need to have the public infrastructure as the community benefit. This is just articulating that further. Same thing with this red line. Essentially just making sure it's added to each of the applicable sections, so that it's abundantly clear that the community benefit of public infrastructure is a requirement. And, I think that was it, with the exception of track size, so.
You wanna go back?
You ready for me to go into that?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
All right, I will pull up the map in a second. So, just as a reminder, so the current ordinance states a hu- one hundred contiguous acres. This draft states twenty acres, should say contiguous, uh, permitted in all zoning districts except for AR one. AR one is our most restrictive, our lowest density area. And then um, fifty contiguous acres in AR one zoning districts. So obviously, that is the most significant change. And this map.
Where's that map on my thing, Kelly?
It is.
Potential map, P U D potential map.
Oh, yeah, the one that says map.
I'm gonna flip it sideways, cause I think it'd be easier to read, hopefully. Good if I flip it, I know it's not north-south.
Flip away.
My compass is gonna be all messed up.
So.
North-south kinda guy.
See, even I confuse myself. Uh, I should.
You should go back to.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Yep.
Just so that you can read the legend before I get into, uh.
I was, I was starting to sweat.
So, and I'll zoom back out, but just so everyone can understand. So the pink areas are vacant, one hundred contiguous acre parcels. The darker blue are fifty acre parcels, contiguous parcels. Acre parcels, contiguous parcels in AR1.
Back to tonight's agenda.
The lime green color are vacant. AR1 parcels adding up to fifty. Contiguous acres, and then.
Nope.
I think there's something missing from here. Let, let's start here, and I'll take. Your feedback.
That one, I think.
So the pink is showing essentially what. As the hundred acre requirement exists today. Where you would see it, and it's, we talked about this last time, I said, I think there's like two or three areas, so you can see that shown. And then the blue and green are the areas of potential. For the change.
So some of the green are owned by PSNH today?
Yeah.
Correct.
Do we have any? Feel or any background information that they sell their property for development?
That's a great question.
I wouldn't expect that they would.
That's a great question, though.
And then my other comment on the two blue ones up by the corner of, uh, Stonehenge and, uh, Route twenty-eight is, uh, they both have substantial wet areas. Probably greater than half of the acreage.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that does to the whole density discussion. So we talk about one point, one, one point five residences per acre, not, per gross acre, not per developable, or buildable acre.
Hmm.
So you're gonna really be smashing a lot of houses into a small area if, if we approach it with that calculation.
That's true. That's true, and that wouldn't be good.
But sewer and water has to support that.
Correct.
Say it again?
Sewer and water has to support it, so that would be the limiting factor, I think, there.
Yeah, but that makes it, that makes it easier, if you had to put. Septic on it, it would be harder, and it would be less dense.
I hate to talk specifics, and it's probably not the right, the right thing to do, but if we have a fifty acre parcel, and there's only twenty acres that are buildable.
Yeah, the density should be.
Gotcha.
Yeah, not the twenty.
Not the twenty.
Yeah, how do you define buildable? That's a, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I think that's probably easier than affordable.
Yeah. Yep, yes, it is.
I think most of those blue, blue pieces are all wet.
Yeah, they're significant, significant wet areas.
I think, but I think it's a good point, that it's asked, that needs to be answered. So. How do we adjust for that?
And maybe the same question to the red areas too, I'm not real familiar with the red areas, I haven't walked the red areas at all to really know what's up there.
Would that also make it, though, less likely that you'd wanna do anything with it, because there is just not the space to do it, and you've gotta do mixed use, and it's. Still ends up in a very concise area, and it may not even be.
I don't know.
We don't know if those are like contiguous either, it could be spread out, and then, okay, now, we're gonna have a store here, a wetland in the middle, and a apartment building that.
One of these is landlocked by conservation land, I think.
So, now I'm really gonna go off on a whim. What are we spinning our wheels here for?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not a lot to talk about.
There's not a lot.
There's nothing to talk about.
Yeah.
I mean, we just don't have the available land.
Yeah.
The red areas are probably.
Isn't that why it was reduced?
Yeah.
It was reduced from a hundred to fifty.
And even with that, yeah.
Twenty. For a reason. Right? Where's the, where's the hundred, is that the?
Pink.
Pink.
The red line? A bit easier, easier for me to work that real out.
I mean, one of those is industrial, right? The one off ninety-three, that abuts ninety-three is industrial, right?
I'll just, so, uh. Yeah, this is, um. This is, uh, owned by Evans.
Yeah. Both of them.
This is, I believe, a little bit of. PSNH.
I think a lot of that is the Evans as well.
I think all of that's, are the Evans.
Yeah.
And a lot of that's now.
And this is the, um.
Industrial.
Governor's Corp. Uh, Lamontane parcel. Both these.
I don't think, there just isn't the, uh, real choice, uh, land available.
Yeah.
But I will say, so, for some reason, this isn't showing the. The twenty acre. It's showing the fifty in AR1, but it's not showing up on.
Aren't those the green ones, 'cause I, I see yellow ones on mine, and it looks like green up there.
Vacant AR1's adding to, adding up to fifty. 'Cause that's AR1 tipping point, let me just.
Where is, um, Elwood? I don't see that here. I don't know, but that blue thing to the left, Anthony Drive, that's mostly, uh, EverSource, right? Isn't there a power line that goes right through that?
Yep, in that, in that vicinity, anyway. I think ever, the power lines are typically just right of ways.
Yeah, that's true. Would Elwood be considered not vacant, 'cause there's something on it? That's probably why it's not.
That's why I didn't pick up, but.
Yeah.
The, the blue on the, uh, far left, isn't that landlocked by the, uh, Musquash? Conservation?
Yeah.
So, I, I think this, I think the mapping is incomplete.
Yeah.
Because Elwood, Elwood is a big one. That, that.
That's, yeah.
It's a, it's a bunch of contiguous, family owned. But it's a lot of acres.
You'd have to be the only one missing, though, wouldn't it?
That I'm aw- that I'm aware of.
True.
Right, right now. But if that's missing, then the GIS didn't pick up something for some reason, and.
We can run it again, but I do think that, I mean. Well, I know the hundred is, I know that's accurate.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And the Elwood is close to a hundred. If you add them all up.
But it's just not vacant.
Yeah, I think the question is vacant.
So I guess, I guess, and I.
Yeah, define vacant.
So. I think it's challenging to display it. It's that exact, because this goes back to a discussion we were having at Master Plan, I think you, somebody asked the question about, maybe Jake.
How do we define?
How are you defining?
Yeah.
Vacant land, or forest land, or whatever the conversation was, and GIS manager for the RPC was saying. Essentially, if there's a farmhouse on it, it's not gonna, doesn't fit the definition, it won't be picked up, essentially, I think that's.
And unfortunately, that, that creates incomplete data for us.
That's the same. Thing that's happening here.
It's incomplete data set, for sure.
What I will say is that.
Still not many, but.
You shouldn't. You should most certainly consider. How much land could potentially be used for this? Or you should be careful about how specific you get. If that makes sense.
It does, it does, and, but to that point. We tried to have an example, we tried to be an example to show us what the availability was, and it, and it didn't do it, a hundred percent.
Yep.
And it, and I don't even, it's probably not even seventy-five percent, and I would like to see it get closer.
Hmm, I agree.
If that's possible, and it may, and it may not be possible, unfortunately, and, and I will tell you that. Um, I'm willing to take some time to do it by hand, if the GIS isn't working, so just.
We can certainly do that, I do think, though, that. When you're putting in whatever the input. If you do put in that additional. Ask, if you will, of. Like, start including. Parcels with, like, what would.
Single-family home with more than twenty acres.
Then you're gonna get every single-family subdivision pop, pop up, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, it's gonna take a second set of eyes, though, to pull those.
And then there's some on here, and that's why.
Well, you also have, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to have some institutional knowledge as well, to understand what a name means on a piece of land, right? And so. That's also important for, for.
Oh, yeah.
To try and pull the data set, sorry, Sean.
Oh, no problem. Part of me wonders, though, does this average out, 'cause when I look at the one by the Musquash, I'm like, I don't think that's buildable, and so, like, some of these that show up, shouldn't, if we're, if we wanna get more accurate, shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there. Does it all end up, yeah?
Yeah, we get kind of a.
Call it four hundred acres, and we go through the whole thing, and it's four hundred ten acres.
Yeah. It's got a giant swamp in the middle.
Yeah.
Do you think? We should display it as best we can, better than it is right now, just to ensure it.
And we had to, we also have to be careful, Sean, with the word unbuildable?
'Cause what's buildable now.
Because on my, on the gable end of my house, right across the street, is a beautiful home on non-buildable land.
Yep.
That was built, that was built fifteen years ago, because the technology changed.
Yes.
And they were able to do with granite ledge what they couldn't do ten years prior, which is what made it unbuildable. Also, we've had discussed, discuss, this discussion before, wh- when a, when a, most of the time, when a developer says it's not buildable, is because they can't make any money on it, because of the cost to develop it.
When that changes.
Not that you can't put something there.
Yep.
And that, and that's something that people get confused about as well, tho- those, those two different things. Unbuildable can mean two different things, right, so.
I'm just thinking, the one surrounded by the Musquash seems very, like, there could be, like, all of a sudden, we all start flying things and stuff, I mean, that's possible, but it seems very unlikely that's gonna change.
Agree. Yeah, I, I agree, but, that said, DES could change their rules.
Yeah.
And Londonderry could get, the, the, the townspeople could get greedy and say, fill it in, like, like they did all over. The United States for years and years and years, but, um, what the chances of that happen in a slim to none?
Yeah.
Alright. So. Anything else before I try and recap?
Nope.
No?
So I'm gonna go back and take a deeper look at the. Uh. The cap for the affordable housing discussion. You recommended. Upping it to fifty percent allowable, so double. Um, looking at, just evaluating that further from my. Professional standpoint, and then looking at. Other communities where it's actually worked. Not necessarily the, that specific cap, but it, what caps have worked in other communities.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Some language adjustments, or grammar stuff, flipping words around that I had incorrect. But. That, that affordable density item, and then the map, the track size map are my two big. Items to bring back to you.
Yep.
When do you want it?
Tomorrow.
Do it during the next council meeting.
Can I, can I offer one more suggestion with that, when you're looking at where it worked? I think I've heard from the chair numerous times, where it's worked to. Uh, promote. Affordable housing for sale versus for lease.
And maybe it's not done through the PUD.
Huh?
Maybe it's not done through the PUD, maybe it's individual, enti- I know this is off topic a little, but maybe it's individual. Builders on individual lots that we need to entice to build smaller, more affordable homes.
No, I, I just know what she's gonna find, and most of the time, it's, it's too. Most of the time, the inducement, the people that take advantage of it are building multifamily houses.
Yep.
For rent.
Gotcha.
And I think what I've heard over time is that you wanna. And maybe you don't, I mean, but I think you wanna build it for sale, but.
And I think you were onto something when you said some of the soft costs that are passed along, 'cause that's what increases the cost, we can control that, if we get too much on the enticement, we, we end up paying and getting the wrong result, and that economically doesn't tend to work out.
I agree.
So you want, obviously, we need another work session?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Do you prefer, if I poll you guys again for a particular date separate from our regular meetings, I can tell you December. The two meetings are pretty full in December, so.
Yeah. That's fine.
December gets to be a busy month anyway, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
Ready for me to move on?
Okay, next item.
Alright, so. The board asks that we have this discussion about the Heritage Commission, their jurisdiction, and my understanding, um. How we can better define this board's expectations of the Heritage Commission. And their role. So. I put together yet another PowerPoint. To try and cap, recap that. And in addition, I should add, I did circulate the. Memo from our former town manager, that essentially. Uh, it states everything that I have in this presentation, this is just a slightly more condensed version of it. Uh, but I did circulate that, both of this board and the Heritage Commission. Um, and I did find Mr. Ellis's letter that's referenced in there.
Thank you.
Which, just to reiterate, that letter from Mr. Ellis does. I'm summarizing here, but it essentially says that they, the Heritage Commission should look to getting back to their original, uh, purpose.
The core values, I think, is the word.
Core values, thank you.
Yep.
So, real quick. What is the Heritage Commission? So we have the statutory. Um. Definition or, or guidance, regulatory framework, if you will, it essentially just says they're an advisory body, body, they're charged with. Taking inventory of historical cultural resources, advising other boards, so that's what they do for you, assisting with the master plan update.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you finish that sentence, please, advising other boards?
Advising other boards when requested.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get back to the details of this stuff in a minute, but, yes, advising other boards when, when requested. Researching cultural historic topics. Public education and outreach in coordination, again, this is specific to heritage matters. Uh, and then reviewing only limited matters granted by regulation, so, in our example, it's disturbance of historic stone walls, that's what we have in our specific regulations. So again, it's not a land use board, I know you all know this, this is, again, this is just to recap that letter. From Malaguti, so. What the Heritage Commission is not. So again, they're not a regulatory land use board like you all, or like the ZBA, or even like the Historic District Commission. So this is the time we're gonna point out. The Heritage Commission is called the Heritage slash Historic District Commission, this leads to a little bit of confusion, but I do think it's entirely possible to. Appropriately define each, even as it exists now. I'll come back to that. So, again, Harri- I'm, I'm talking about Heritage Commission, I'm not talking about Historic District Commission in this instance. It doesn't have the authority to approve site plans, subdivisions, zoning applications, or CUPs. They can't add conditions to a planning board approval, I think this is the most important point, because this is where we're seeing. The advisory comments that the Heritage Commission provides you all. Historically, they seem, at least in my estimation, to have been just included in the conditions of approval, whether that be by specific. Condition that they've stated as their recommendation, or it's by way of saying, address all the DRC comments, because they are included as part of that design review committee. Ultimately, this board, when you are going through your site plan review, and you give your conditional approval, you are technically making that. Um, condition, but I don't know as if each time that that's done, it's abundantly clear that that's exactly what you're doing, that you're lumping those. Um, recommendations into that, the condition, if that makes sense.
Hmm.
Like, we're not in every instance going through the specific heritage comments and saying, yes, we agree with this, no, we don't. At least not in my experience so far.
Well, we don't, we don't get a list like that from them.
Right, and that, very good point, that is. Again, in my experience here so far, because. The applicant is addressing the comment. Prior to even getting to you, so they're coming to you, and they've already responded to whatever it is, change a window. So they're coming to you and they've already responded to whatever it is, change a window, what, whatever you want. What is it that you like to talk about? Belly boards?
Belly.
Belly boards.
They've already done it, so that gets removed, if they've addressed it, I'm not gonna keep it on there.
Right.
So, that's part of the conversation that we're gonna have. Um, and again, they don't have the authority to require redesigns, traffic changes, et cetera, I think you get the point.
So they're part of the DRC though?
Correct.
So doesn't that give them some authority?
A person. It says, a member.
I'm gonna get to it. Give me a minute.
A member.
So, actually, it's this slide, look at that. So, in the site plan regulations, this applies to the subdivision regulations as well, because they both, both processes go through our, um, that should say Deva- Design Review Committee. But it specifically says only a representative from each board participates in DRC. So the full commission isn't required. So in our site and subdivision regulations, we have a list of the committee, the DRC committee. But it specifically says only a representative. For one reason or another, the practice has now been to send a design review application to that entire list, inclusive of the entire commission, not just a representative. So that's a point that we should talk about.
Yeah, yeah, actually, uh, my experience, when we first started off, the, uh, commission would have the plans, be, you know, so it'd be the commission and the, just the plans, and then go through the plans and make any, uh, any comments that were, you know, and that's where the renderings would be there, and then that would get passed along to the planning board. So at that point, there was no, no de- developer or anyone doing the presenting. It's, it's changed, so.
There's so much showing back here.
I wanna just get through this.
I'm going out of my seat, finish this so I can.
So, uh, the other portion of the regulations, as I highlighted before, is specific about the disturbance of the historic stone walls. So we do have specific regulation that talks about, um, heritage weighing in on that. Um, but, long story short, their participation in this review is advisory, and I would argue optional, from the sense of the, the regulations state only a representative from that commission is required to participate.
That was, was the chair, that, uh, we're probably looking close to thirty years ago.
But what, but the representative, I would think, would be there representing the view of the commission and not his personal, his or her personal.
That's the intent.
I agree. I agree.
So, that, one person's there, but I would expect them to represent the Heritage Commission.
Yeah.
Their views.
So they would be delivering what the commission has, uh, comments that they had made.
Yes.
So I get the individual, but I, I, I still think that individual is representing the commission.
My guess as to where this kinda changed, really from a staff standpoint, and how the plan department, um, processes and, and drives this review process from the design standpoint, so everything before it gets here, is I'm assuming at one point or another, it was actually a technical review committee, and it would be an in-person meeting back in the day when it was a smaller town, and you could do that, and you didn't have, you know, five developments in the queue at the same time, and you follow me, getting everyone to the table to have that meeting that I typically would see in smaller communities, you know, that's just not realistic.
The whole town would stop.
Yeah.
And all the heads would come together in a meeting and nothing else went on for the next two hours or three hours.
I mean, it's, it's hard enough to get the planning department and the engineering department to coordinate a meeting, never mind the entire DRC committee list. Um, I'm talking in person to go through this process, so the, the process is, is morphed into what it is, which, um, somehow, or another along the way, ended up including the entirety of the commission, whereas that's not what the regulation currently states. So just to reiterate, um, why we're looking to, why we're trying to look at this right now is because this has really expanded the commission's legal role, and I think their, the role as far as what the planning board is expecting from them, it's gone beyond what you all need from them in order to make your informed decisions. Um, it's creating delays in the review process, which I've corrected to some degree. Um, but my hangup is, there is a section in the site plan and subdivision regulations that states a Heritage Commission rep needs to participate in the DRC process, so I didn't wanna go, you know, abruptly changing that without doing this conversation first. Uh, but some of the initial changes that I've made just in the last month, based on your feedback as a board, is I'm not sending people back to the Heritage Commission for multiple reviews, it's not required, it's not necessary. Um, and we've, not in just the last few months, but over the last couple of years, um, and I'll credit the Heritage Commission with this, been doing a better job of saying that they're advisory only and this is their purview, uh, at the beginning of the meetings.
Yeah, cause what I wanna add, the early days, we had no staff. Probably not, staff, uh, was part of it until, uh, ten years ago or so.
So, to move forward, what I heard so far is we need to get the Heritage Commission back to its initial mission and its statutory miss- mission, which as it's written in our regs right now, is, as, again, to have them still participate in that DRC process, to weigh in on the stone walls. And also, they do, and this is where you get into the heritage and historic commission aspect, where we, um, they're providing input on the historic district, if you will, which, as we know, is five properties that aren't contiguous. Um, so still, so following that process. Um, but additionally, it sounds like we need to update the regulations to make clear that the commission, or even the representative, however we end up doing it, is advisory only. What the scope of the review is, and that making clear that this board is the board that has the authority to make decisions. Want me to wait, cause I got some proposed? Okay. So a couple of options, um, for potential site plan regulation amendments. So adding a new section that talks about the Heritage Commission role. So I gave you an or here, so I've got designated representative of, of the Heritage Commission may participate in the DRC process for the purpose of identifying potential impacts to documented historic, cultural, and archaeological resources. That's one option. Or, a designated rep from the Heritage Commission may provide advisory comments on site plan applications where proposed construction may affect historic stone walls, documented cultural resources, or it is within the designated historic district per the ordinance.
Are these two options we're trying to decide between? Or are these just?
I guess that's the question. It can be an or, I put it as an or, meaning I, I think the, the first bullet and the second bullet are, can be redu- is redundant if you have them both, but.
Second one just seems clear.
The second one is, I would, I think it's clearer, it's just a matter of how, how detailed do you wanna get? I assumed that you'd wanna be more detailed, but I'm giving you the option. So that's one item to consider, you want me to keep going or you wanna stop and talk about it?
Keep going, then we'll talk.
So, then revising the section, so this would be a revision, not a new section of the site plan regs, so the section about stone walls. So the current language essentially, um, restricts the, the heritage review and comment to the wall disturbance. So just providing some more clarification, saying that applications that are specifically proposing the removal or disturbance of the stone walls, um, just reiterating that they, the commission can provide an advisory comment. So I think it, it's not super clear, um, or it seems to be now, that any, like, subdivision plan, for example, or, sorry, site plan, that has a stone wall on it, they're providing comment on said wall, not just specific to one that is gonna be disturbed. Which, to me, the purview, the scope, is really focusing on if it's gonna be disturbed or not. So that's the distinction that we're trying to make here. Subdivision regs. Uh, adding in a section that just emphasizes their advisory role, and this is the same language from that, the second bullet from that previous slide, emphasizing this, the scope of, of what they're looking at. The subdivision regulations, um, have the same language in there about stone walls that the site plan regs do, so if you made a change to that section, I would apply it to the subdivision regulations as well. This slide is about their bylaws, which this board has talked about to some degree, I think we've acknowledged that, the bylaws, um, are quite overreaching, uh, so, you know, this is really a conversation that staff should have with the commission, so that they can open and revise their, really, it's rules procedure, they're calling them bylaws, but they should just be rules procedure, um. But, again, we're, it's similar language to what I'm proposing in the site plan regs, as far as where their focus should be, and then, uh, emphasizing that their true regulatory input is specific to that historic district as it's defined in the zoning ordinance, and then with stone walls.
If you do those updates, shouldn't it come here as well? Or not?
So.
I think the statutes say each
Yeah.
board committee creates their own bylaws.
They create their own, but I think.
No approval process or anything.
Like I say, I think that for some reason, it morphed into bylaws, which, I've heard rules procedure and bylaws used interchangeably in some instances, but this is being applied. I don't even think, it's not being applied in the way it should, they're being applied as, as like a formal regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that contradicts our formerly adopted land use regulations, so that is an issue. Um, the, the rules procedure should be exactly that, the rules of how you're operating your meeting, as you, as you all know, yours reflect that. So, like I say, that's, to Art's point, that's really a conversation at the commission level, with the commission and staff, because as far as I understand it, they're in control of their rules procedure.
Cause the original, I think, uh, you know, uh, rules and regulations were taken right from planning boards. Where, that's probably is there where the problem started.
But I think that, um, let's say, for example, their bylaws, they don't change, I mean, the argument remains that they're not applicable, because they're not, that's not a formal regulation, that's not a land use regulation, they're not a land use board. And just because you have bylaws that you adopted, doesn't mean that they are actually.
Enforcable?
Thank you, enforceable.
Cause really, the rules, uh, you know, procedures should be how the meeting is run.
Right.
And, uh,
So like I say, you know.
It's a little more than that.
To me, that's a conversation staff brings to the commission, and we have that, we have that discussion and point that out, and give them an opportunity to revise the rules, um, bylaws, whatever we're calling them, they should be rules procedure, in my opinion.
Yeah, rules, rules and procedures.
And see how that discussion goes, but I think, for the purposes of this board, what we should be focusing on are the amendments that are needed to the site and subdivision regulations, that's what you all have control over. Um, that, as you know, that amendment process filters through you only, it doesn't require council, town council. So, with that.
Hey, Jake's been jumping out of his chair for a half hour.
I know, I know.
Nah, I just, you know.
Jake's just been busy putting stuff together.
I get excited, I get excited. I, I guess, you know, let's go back to how did we end up here? I think that we ended up here because, over the course of however many years, you know, we don't have any sort of technical review committee, and our design review committee, to a degree, had become this, you know, nobody could ask anything about it until it got to the planning board, up until realistically, you came along. Um, I asked a million times to be in a design review meeting before you came along and was told no, every single time. That's exactly how the Heritage Commission ended up the way it, it did, and then it turned into, well, you have to go to the Heritage Commission and satisfy the Heritage Commission before you go to the planning board. I will disagree with your comment about a technical review committee and the ability to have one, we can disagree, that's fine. I think it would solve a lot of these issues. I think the Heritage Committee has served more of an architectural committee than a heritage or historic committee, of which, quite frankly, I think it's more important for them to serve as an architectural committee than a heritage or historical committee. Um, the issue we're running into is, this is kind of a, to me, it's a one bite at the apple type thing. Yes, the heritage commi- committee should come before the planning board, or come before the applicant gets to the planning board. The Heritage Committee, I, I would wanna refer to them as the Architectural Design Committee, should have a very clear idea as to what their scope of, of discussion is, and it should be just that, the architecture of a building. There shouldn't be a Heritage Committee meeting for a two-lot subdivision, there shouldn't be a Heritage Committee meeting for a, you wanna build ten hu- you, you're doing a subdivision and you wanna build ten houses, there shouldn't be one for that, unless there is some historic rock wall, i.e. right over here that had some old rock wall on it, Sergeant wrote, okay, let them go to the committee. What are we talking about here? It, in, in their, let's look at it. Commercial building, alright, let's send that to the, to the site, and I should say, commercial building that has an impact on the town of Lunenary, because again, to me, a heritage com- the committee is more of an architectural review committee. A building up at the airport is not, to me, something that should be going to the Heritage Committee.
That's industrial.
A building on Route twenty-eight should be going to the Heritage Committee, Architectural Design Committee. It should be a one bite at the apple type thing. Here's our plan, this is what we would like to do, what is your input? That said, there needs to be more of a guideline for the applicant to get to the Heritage Committee, so the applicant's prepared for what the, the Heritage Committee wants. Go, okay, here's our plan, great, we hate this, we like this, we don't, we want that. We're, when we're not talking about parking spaces, we're not talking about the curve of the road coming into the building, we're talking about the building, we're talking about the landscaping, we're talking about the aesthetics of the property. This is our opinion, here you go. The applicant can do with it what they want. The right thing for the applicant to do would be to address the, the Heritage Committee's comments, and, and do everything they can to attempt to meet them, and you come to the planning board. Okay, did you not meet anything the Heritage Committee said? Oh, we didn't do this one, that's our turn. Then we figure it out. I, I, we're, I don't know how the wheel got recreated here, but it got recreated, and, uh.
Evolution.
Here we are.
Can I just, I wanna clarify one point, so I didn't say we couldn't have a DRC.
Oh, I know, I, it's very complicated, is what you're saying.
It's complicated, and quite frankly, as things stand right now, from a staffing and availability standpoint, it's gonna cause even more of a delay, and I'm not saying that to, as some type of.
No, I know.
Fear threat, well, that's just, that's a fact reality.
I know.
So I'm more than willing to do it, I just wanna make sure. So I'm more than willing to do it, I just wanna make sure. It's clear as to what that actually looks like.
I personally think there's two things here, one, I think the heritage committee needs to be re, rethought as to what it is, which is truly an architectural. Design and aesthetic committee. And two, further down the road, not the immediate fix, but the down the road fixes, we need to address. Whatever we call design review as of right now.
Yeah.
Cause it's not design review.
Absolutely.
At all. Mr. De.
You did great.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Especially the part where you waited patiently almost.
I did enjoy that.
Congratulations, you did way better than I could've done, ever, ever.
Appreciate it.
So, a couple things, one. I, I personally. Don't like the fact, as a planning board member, one planning board member, that, that. The applicant is making changes to a plan that the planning board doesn't know happened. Because maybe we would've had a different opinion as the planning board. And so, I would, I would, and the problem is, the applicant is sitting there, and the, and the heritage. Committee is here, and you can say, this is advisory only a million times, but what's the applicant gonna do? The applicant's gonna do whatever they say, now it comes to us, we don't know they changed eleven things. Right? So to me, if you go back to the base. And you don't have the applicant, and you don't have a go before the committee, but the representative representing the commission. Looks at the plans and participates in, in the review on Wednesdays at, at one o'clock, or whatever it is.
We don't have scheduled times.
Well, whatever, but, but you see, you see my point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way, the applicant, and now, the, the plan comes to us. And the comment by the commission was this, 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 and this, we look at those four, we might say, hundred percent, we, do the, make those changes. We might say we don't like any of them, you, you see my point, and now the applicant isn't forced to do something that they didn't have to do. That we may not have made them make, okay? So, and before my computer craps up, craps out, I wanna, I wanna quickly help you all understand. And I want you to listen, listen to these, please, of, of comments from the September twenty-fifth meeting of the heritage commission. Okay? And those comments were, I think you should have some swings and slides somewhere in the project. Are the stoves vented to the outside, or is their makeup air provided in the kitchens? How much are the rental costs? Because you have no rendering of your sign, you will need to come back for approv- approval. Okay, Kelly fixed that one. What will, this is a different project, but the same meeting, what will the building be used for? What, what, will trucks be parked outside? And then the worst one was the, the last one. Can I mention the, Kelly, is it appropriate to mention the site, the, the case? It already happened.
Oh yeah, you're good.
Okay, so.
This is all public anyway.
Yeah, so it was, it was the Village on Technology Hill, their final building. Which the PUD that was signed and approved on May ninth of twenty twenty-four. Clearly says that the building, the final building, will be a bold departure from traditional New England architectural norms. Creating a quote unquote, modern mill look. My interpretation is, this building will not match the rest of the project. Okay, and yet, at that meeting, it was more than a half hour to forty-five minute discussion. On the building doesn't look the same as the rest, and we want you to make it look like the rest. That's what, that's what the, the whole last part of the meeting was. And that case ended because through the grace of the, of the applicant, they changed a bunch of stuff to make it kinda look like. The rest, so, you know, somehow, some way, they added some walkways or whatever, they took some stone, or they added some stone, or they took, what, yeah, whatever, whatever they did. And then, and then, right before the end, the question was, are there interior shades in the building? Because that's all glass, and it's gonna get really hot.
That's what I mean.
How, I mean, I don't, I don't know how. I don't know what to say, I, I, I don't, and this is, this is what the applicants are, are faced with, and not, and they don't know what to do.
That's why I think we need to control what they say.
Can I?
We need to give them. A checklist of what you ask, we need to ask.
Should, should be a relationship.
You know.
For a planning board meeting between the developer and the board, and information from the heritage commission.
Kelly's dying to say something.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm worse than Jake.
It's okay.
I think you raise a valid point as far as the optics. But the question that you're all asking, as far as like a checklist or whatever, that same question was asked to me at that, I think it was that heritage meeting that you just were quoting. And my response was, we have architectural guidelines and standards in our site plan regulations. That's for this board, so. My response to this board is, if you're looking to. I'm, I'm talking more in the short term, short term solve to this, what we're calling a problem. To me, that's a short term point of reference, if you will, checklist, guidance, whatever, because they already exist. What I, what I don't advise is getting into. What type are, like architectural standards, like color, brick?
Well, we don't have any, we have.
Cause we don't have them, that's what I'm getting at.
We have a standard, it's not even a.
Right.
Standard.
They have a lookbook.
And then I was gonna bring that up as well.
Me the closest to it.
Get me going on that.
Well, I was gonna bring that up as well, because you, this board, or.
Oh yeah.
You made the effort to update it, that fell off the wagon, one reason or another, but um, I do think that's an important task. That the heritage commission should be focusing on. I mean. That's an excellent item for them to do.
That's what I'm saying, it's an architectural review.
But just backing up a little bit to. I guess, like you said, one bite at the apple, like what are we trying to accomplish in the short term? To me, it's some minor regulatory updates and changes to clarify. That the heritage commission is advisory, and then what their scope is, and I think that's. I'm sure it needs a little adjusting, but I think that's reflected in what I proposed up, up here so far. And then, you know, once we do that, get into the detailed conversation you're talking about, which is really. What does the DRC process look like, what should it be, what shouldn't it be, who's involved?
Yeah.
But I should add too, so, I guess I would look for clarification on. Whether we're. Keeping the. Or really like enforcing. A rep from heritage, or sending it to. The commission, as far as the project itself.
I think in the short term, it needs to continue to go to the commission, until we redesign what our. Design review committee is, it needs to go to the heritage commission, I think the heritage commission needs a very specific set of. Benchmark questions that they need to go off of, and they don't deviate from that. Cause interior shades has absolutely nothing to do with.
We don't even talk about that.
Any of these boards.
How about makeup air, inside, inside the kitchen?
That's, that's what I'm saying, that has nothing.
How about, how about you need swings, you need swing set? I don't know what, I don't know what else to say, I didn't even get into the fact that two of the applicants on that meeting. Had to show the board members where the site was. How embarrassing is that, for the, for, you have an, an applicant, and the, and the board members don't even know where the. Where the, the site is on Rockingham Road, I don't, I don't even know, I don't even know what to say, it's, it's embarrassing.
So can we focus back?
I wanna let you go real quick.
Yeah, because I do have to go, and I just, I, I just wanna respect all the hard work Kelly did. I like the second proposed language, and I am in agreement with your revised revisions. And unfortunately, I have a six AM appointment tomorrow, so I have to.
You got, you got time, you got time to get, you got time to get there.
But I may not get any sleep immediately, so that was, that was my.
I'll see you, buddy.
Hey. See you, boss.
I also should say.
This is, this is my problem, is there, the.
It's not gonna, this isn't gonna fix.
Stone walls isn't fixing anything.
I know.
Stone walls is not fixing anything.
So like, so this change provides a little bit of. More clear parameters for them, right? To very, very little, but then to your other point about the guidelines and checklist. So I referenced the site plan regs, and we do have architectural guidelines and standards, I mean, those exist.
Hardly.
Well, they're pretty, pretty detailed, what we use as staff in our review, to justify our comments about. Roof lines and things like that, I mean, that's, that is, I'm just pointing out, that's. An item that talks about architecture and building renderings, it's a regulation that exists, that you could utilize as.
I think that, you know, back to the lookbook, that should be the heritage commission's entire discussion. How does this look compared to the lookbook? Lookbook doesn't talk about parking lots, lookbook doesn't talk about, the lookbook talks about the architecture of the building.
It's the atmosphere.
Yes, thank you, the exterior architecture.
And the shame of it is, the heritage commission, i- i- it's an important board, and I, and I don't want that to be lost, and they, and they could be providing. Important perspective on, on some of these sites, and we don't see it currently, for, for, for whatever reason. Partly because we don't know what they're doing, we don't know what they've done. Conservation Commission, for example, has, has a.
Yeah, Maritrite's a thing.
Has a piece of paper with a checklist on it, and a comment section.
Heritage Commission has the same one.
Of, of what they, of what they've done, when, when the applicant came to us, this is what we said. And, and we see that, right? Heritage, we don't know what they did, we, we get a set of plans, we don't know if those were originals before the heritage commission meeting, or. If they were doctored to reflect what that commission said.
Would, would it be acceptable for, after they go to that meeting, to kinda check with someone? To, before you make any changes, you're gonna have good heritage, before you make any changes, just come back. I know it's putting more work on staff, but, and, and talk about the changes.
It's up to the applicant to. Take this advice, do with it what you will.
Or not.
And when you come to the, but this is the problem, we don't know. We don't know what they necessarily.
And frankly, an applicant would be a little bit off if they didn't do what the commission suggested.
Well, absolutely, that's all.
Correct.
And that gives us the ability to say, go back to the commission.
So by default, so by default, they're not advisory.
Correct, because if you.
And that's a problem.
If you know you're going to a board at Lunenary, and you wanna build something, and they say. I really like roses, this would be, look great with a bunch of roses out front, guess what you're doing, putting roses. It, it may not, it.
Or a swing set.
Or a swing set, or whatever, right? So by the time it gets here, we see all the roses and the swing set, and we're like, that's weird, if that's what you wanna build, like, that's fine, but.
We don't know where it came from.
Right, so, okay, so back to your point, would it be acceptable for them to, with the application that comes, all these applications, can we insert a sheet from the heritage commission?
We do that.
There, there is a sheet, but it's not.
That goes back to the entire problem of the real root cause of this, of some. Mambo jumbo, and please don't take this the wrong way, Kelly, some mambo jumbo DRC, we're working off of.
I didn't come up with it.
No, I know you didn't.
I don't take any of that.
Our DRC is working off a piece of paper that somebody's scribbling in.
She inherited that whole process.
Yeah.
Okay, so just.
I'm just saying, but.
Twenty years, it's almost outdated.
But, but think about that.
It probably goes back to.
This is what our DRC, our DRC is working off of, somebody going on a piece of paper in two thousand twenty-five going.
Right.
Who do I give this to now, like, that's ridiculous, what?
Right, but, so.
Kelly gets everything.
So they fill out the form, I guess I've never seen swing sets or anything, but maybe that's before me, right.
That, that plan hasn't come to us yet.
No, but I guess what I'm saying, does that form then go back to the applicant, so they can leave with a piece of paper to say, okay, this is their recommendations?
Let me back all the way up, let me back all the way up, so I, I go, process. Applicant comes to planning, they submit an application, go through the fees and all that. Planning department then sends out the entire plan set to the DRC committee. That being, all the municipal departments. Conscom, heritage, I'm sure I'm missing somebody, but. So they send that entire list. The plan set, and then the comment sheets that are for each of those committee, design committee members, reviewers. To fill out. They have X period of time to review it and fill it out, they send all those comment sheets back to the planning department. We compile it all. Including our technical review comments, we send that package back to the applicant, they review it. They adjust their plans accordingly, so yeah, they get the comment sheets from heritage as well, and they're, and they're at the meeting. And then they revise their plans, and they either go through that whole process again.
They shouldn't be going through the process again.
Or they go right to this board for formal. The change I've made, based on this board's feedback, like I said earlier, is that.
The process.
Uh-uh, you're not, no one's going back for any reason, that's. And I did that because this board made that very clear, at least to me, that you don't want that happening.
Right, so if they wanna fight the swing set, if they wanna discuss more about the swing set and the roses, they come back, yeah, I like that.
Correct.
The issue.
Which Kelly has started doing.
Yeah, but the issue.
They have the public input, you know.
That you're asked, the issue that you're pointing out, though, is that. So like I said, we compile the comments, we send them back, they adjust. Nine times out of ten, they're putting the swing set up, whatever this example is that we're using. So, because, to your point, Ryan, they're not gonna argue with.
Yeah, I'm not gonna waste a month over a swing set, I'm putting a swing set in.
Right.
And that goes back to kinda like. Your point about just the process overall, the order of operations, if you will, and then also the optics issue of, you've got people sitting up here telling this person down here.
It's basically a kangaroo court.
So, you know, I, I'm not saying me personally, but I am the one managing the process for the most part, so I've taken steps to. Try and fix that, like, like I said, I'm not sending people back again, I made that clear, I think I copied this board on my email, and I sent it to the heritage commission. That was met with a lot of resistance by the heritage commission.
Maybe it's in optics, is there a reason why it's in this room, because I've gone to meetings in, in the, it was years ago, but, uh, for like, um, I think it was, um. I don't know, one of the, one of the committees, historical, or, I don't know, and it was in a little conference room, and it feels different, feels like a meeting, this feels like decisions. Like up here, when I see this desk, this looks like decisions are getting made, and they are made here.
It's really just about availability and then the ability to reform.
Right, because, but I just think it feels different, when you're sitting down here, and we're sitting up, up here, it, these are the decision makers, that's the person looking for something. It doesn't feel advisory, advisory is on the same level.
To me. The bigger issue, like you said, and you've said this for, I don't know, years at this point, is the, the process overall, but. What I'm trying to think about the immediate fix, it's what I've been doing, not sending them back for repeat meetings. But also, some of these, just what I view as somewhat quick regulatory changes. The only other item I don't, I don't think I put up here is. Allowing, or adding language in here that. Uh, gives staff, but specifically the planning department, the discretion.
I agree.
To send or not, like, for example. If we have a two lot subdivision.
Shouldn't be going to heritage commission.
But only, the, the point at which staff needs to use discretion is, we need to evaluate this stone wall measure, because that is a regulation. That's easy.
Yeah, is there one, or is there not one?
Yeah, so we can send that to them.
If they say, if they say they're keeping the stone wall, then.
Right, that's why this clarification is necessary as well, so, I, like I said, the only. Amendment, if you will, that I would add. Amendment, if you will, that I would add for your consideration is adding like a line about. It's up to, it's planning department discretion, whatever the.
I would be down for that.
I think we need to do this, and I would be looking for the board's input on this, I think.
This being.
What I'm about to say.
Oh, okay.
I, I think that. We need to set a clear set of expectations for the Heritage Commission, be it, like, we come up with. Ten questions, whatever it is, that is specific to the architecture and landscape of the building. As well as if there is a historical resource associated with it. They have questions they ask that get answered, they provide an opinion, that's it.
We don't have jurisdiction, we don't have jurisdiction over the historical part of who they are. We only have, we only have jurisdiction over the heritage.
I know.
Part of who they are.
I know.
But that's more like the ZBA format is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
That is exactly how it needs to be.
Historical piece, which I don't think any of us are really worried about, cause that's not.
There's like three historical things in the town, and guess what, the Reverend Moran House is not one of them.
Right, so, so is that acceptable, Kelly? I think it's a.
Had to go there.
But I, I think you, they should shape it similar to the, to the ZBA.
I agree.
Not many questions maybe, or whatever.
I agree.
Does that make?
We need to provide them with what those are, I can't give that to you tonight, we need to provide it to them, there needs to be a. There needs to be a bigger standard for the applicant based off of these questions. Ie, if we're going to talk about, you know. The facade of the building, it should be a requirement of the applicant to bring materials appropriate to correctly. Show what the facade of the building is gonna be, if the applicant doesn't have that, doesn't get hurt. And, and just make it very simple, five or ten questions, this is it. What's your roof line look like? Is it in line with our lookbook? What are the colors on your building? Can you show them to us? Is it in line with your lookbook? What is the material used on the ex- exterior of your building? Does it align with our lookbook? If it doesn't, the Heritage Commission provides a recommendation, they got pink brick on the side of the building, well, no, we want red brick. Heritage Commission notes, uh, question number three, applicant has proposed pink brick, we recommend they change it to red. Like.
But I, yeah, but like, but like ZBA does, after the applicant has presented.
They're done.
That's what, that's.
That's the conversation.
And then the conversation happens on this side of the desk.
It's not a.
So that the plans aren't changed at that point. The plan then comes to us, it has, the, it's pink, we look at the recommendation from, from heritage that says, we don't like the pink. We decide if we like pink or not.
Correct.
That's a great idea.
So very similar to the way ZBA does it.
We, it gets rid of, it gets rid of this.
It gets rid of the kangaroo court.
Happens here, back and forth happens here.
It gets rid of the kangaroo court of, of, of what's been going on with, well, I better put a swing set in because that's what they said. And I don't want the plan getting rejected, cause we didn't put a swing set in.
So, w- with that point, I'm not sure that those, those answers to those questions go to the applicant until we, it goes to us.
Yes.
Because if he goes and makes it p- blue, and we like the pink, cause it's for cancer month or something, you know?
Yeah, right, so, yeah, conceptually, yes.
This is what we currently have, this is what goes to the commission. See this little check boxes, just like conscom has. This is sent out during our designer reprocess. In theory, they're looking at it, they're using it when they're hearing the presentation and they're filling it out accordingly. It's not what's happening, but this is, I think, this is.
Is there more to this?
This is some version of what you're talking about, this is the.
That's the whole thing.
Design Review Committee comment sheet. That is sent to the Heritage Commission for them to utilize to generate their comments.
There's nothing else to this sheet, this is all, yeah.
There's a little bit more.
Yeah.
Little blank area for you to scribble on.
That's it?
So look at this, so, so look at this, we made, this was what, this. Villajon Technology Hill. This is, this is what we filled out for a god only knows how many million dollar project to talk about heritage permission stuff. It's crazy, there's no creative questions, yes, no. Does it meet the expectation? Yes, nothing to talk about, does it not meet the expectation? No, what's your expectation? Done.
You can even put other recommendations, if you wanna throw one in there too. Well, and that's what happens, cause I've seen a Conservation Commission sheet like this, nothing checked off above, the comments written below, yeah.
Oh, you know, ba, 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 you, exactly.
Which is fine, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
That gets into the free.
Yeah.
Anything goes.
Correct. It need not be. A conversation.
Right, cause I.
It needs to be a presentation with. Clear directive from the Heritage Commission, that's it.
To the planning board.
To the planning board.
Clear directive to the planning board, not to the applicant.
Correct.
But you can't have the applicant lea- it's a public meeting, so the applicant can stay and you can still talk.
Uh, just like you can the ZBA, but it's.
True.
You know, okay, we've closed comment, alright, board, let's go down these ten questions, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no.
I would say on this, lighting doesn't need to be there, cause we have our regulations. And street naming, development name is not even, it's all done.
That, but that's what I'm saying, it's, it's all just like this moot point.
Uh, I mean, it's been like this since probably for at least fifteen years or so.
I think we need to come up with a little bit of a comprehensive list of what we would like the Heritage Commission to answer. Or, or provide input on. It's up to the applicant to do with it what they want, and the Heritage Commission needs a clear.
Probably a little more.
Understanding of this, this is what we need you to do, this is how it's expected to be done, thank you.
I think when we did the lookbook too. We, well, heritage also, we all took pictures and I think we put some verbiage in on the, uh. Style, you know, and what, wh- what we like about the architecture.
To, to me, whatever you come up with, that the, that the. Applicant doesn't feel pressured to make changes based on what was said by an advisory board.
Correct.
Is all, is a- all, is what me personally, uh, what I have objection to.
I could argue that a little bit, I could argue that a little bit, cause. What are things that are not an advisory board? The town staff recommendations. The application, or the applicant has the right to say nothing of those too and come to us and discuss it. Same thing as the Heritage Committee.
As per waiver.
Yeah.
Same, the same thing.
Correct, so I could argue that a little bit.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I, I, I think that's valid, I think that's fair to say, um, I just, I think it's a kangaroo court. And, and I, I, I can't get off of it, I just can't, I watch those meetings all the time.
Yeah.
And if I was an applicant on the other side, and I've been on that, I've been on the other side of the desk many, many times in a lot of different towns. And I'm telling you right now, if, if, whatever they said, I'm doing it, cause I, cause my client wants the project done. And, and I, in this case, I don't think it's right. So, uh, you know.
So what's the leadership situation in, in the commission right now?
Alright.
Looking for a chairman. Something I don't really wanna do, had my, my stint in the past. Uh, there are two, two vacancies. Uh, so what, I guess I'm de facto chair right now because I'm vice chair. And then, um. So much of what I'm hearing depends on the chair running the meeting as well.
Hundred, hundred percent, hundred percent true.
Absolutely, I let you get away with stuff when I want you to get away with stuff and I don't when I know.
And I, and I think that with steerage, with some steerage, I think it could, it could be different. Um. I, I think, you know, and Mi- Mike Malaguti and I.
I think you should apply for the Heritage Committee.
Yeah, I can, I'm not a full member, we're gonna talk about that after we're done with this. So, so, um.
You, you, you have to join the heritage first. You have to be a member of the.
Oh, I thought you meant as a rep- as the representative, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, so.
The chair.
Yeah.
That solves our problem, you join the Heritage Commission.
Yeah, so I, I think with steerage.
You're available now for a full seat, right? Cause you're not here, full seat.
Uh, uh, yeah, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, let's, stop getting off track.
Her getting off track, she's the only one that's on track.
So, so anyway, I, I. I think with, with proper guidance, I think the current system can work. The question is, who's doing the proper guidance? Who, who can, who has the time to do that? You, you got, you got a department that's so understaffed, it's ridiculous. And, and now somebody's gotta babysit the Heritage Commission. So, Jake, to your point, m- m- make a checklist.
Yeah.
If it ain't on the checklist, you can't ask the question.
Yeah.
Pretty simple.
I think that's reasonable, I mean, we have it already. This process that you're talking about exists right here.
Yeah, so let's tweak, let's tweak it and refine it.
So, that's one part, part two, I still believe is some type of regula- you know. What I'm calling minor, some may think differently, but minor regulatory changes to hopefully provide clarity on. The role and the scope of the commission, because really, right now, all it says in our regulations, that being site and subdivision is. They're part of the DRC process, period.
I'm, I'm member.
Yeah, one representative.
One representative from the Heritage Commission.
So I heard.
This is the problem, everything we just talked about wasn't historic, cultural, or archaeological, it was architectural.
Well, that's, that, that, that's okay, cause the other half of them, their role is their historic district commission.
That's still nothing, what, what is our historic district? Nothing.
To be clear, that has nothing to do with us and.
Right, that's, that's.
I get that, but it just, this, to me, that's like, we put that in place and nothing's going to the Heritage Commission.
Well, remember, there's also.
Light, lighten the load.
There was also an ask, there was also an ask, could the planning department use discretion, discretion?
That's where we need to be.
To decide which applicant goes to heritage and which does not.
I mean.
And is this board prepared?
Is this something we can make decisions on tonight?
I'm just looking for some direction to, as to what to bring back to you.
My recommendation, we, would be items that go to the Heritage Commish- Committee. There's an impact to a stone wall, or it is in a. Commercial area, not an industrial area, not a residential area. Would be my recommendation.
You can't touch residences anyway.
But it still goes to them, doesn't it?
But, but bulk of it is the, uh, commercial site plans.
Correct, but what I'm getting at is right now, the Heritage Commission is still seeing.
Well, yeah.
A ten house subdivision, why?
That would be an example of, I'm assuming what you're getting at is staff discretion where.
That's what I'm saying.
See the subdivision plan and I'm like, they're not, there's not even a stone wall to be found anywhere.
Going to the Heritage.
There is, they're not touching it.
Correct.
Yeah, cause I know, it, it seems to be more recent history that we're getting all the industrial stuff. Uh, previously, I think the developers knew enough, cause they kind of wanna blend in. And it's, it's another basic architecture for industrial building and it's not New England style or anything like, like that, it's just industrial. Like the mill era.
But I mean, what, what? Industrial buildings, when I think of industrial, I think of the airport, I think of Pettingill Road. Big old metal box.
That's where it's owned industrial.
It, it's a big old metal box, what's there to discuss?
Color.
We can do that here.
Yes, yeah, but, but it, yes, to your point, why does that create an extra meeting for an applicant?
That's what I'm saying.
When, 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 we can do that here.
McDonald's on twenty-eight? Yeah, that should go to the Heritage Committee.
Correct, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, of course, so let, so let staff make the decision. You know, because originally, the commission just looked at, at plans and there was no staff.
So.
We, we, we want staff input, cause it's been very.
I would say this, can we give staff discretion? To. Can we give staff the discretion to ask the chair of the planning board if it is reasonable for an item to not go to the. Heritage Commission, so then it is not solely laying on the shoulders of the town staff. Hi, Chair of the Planning Board, there's a big metal building going at one, two, three industrial way, behind one, four, five industrial way. Do you want it to go to the Heritage Commission? No.
I guess.
Okay.
Or the, the other option.
I have no problem with that.
Would be for staff just to discuss the building without the applicant there or anything, and then, uh.
My only. And forgive me, my brain's starting to fail me, but, um, my slight, well, a little bit of hesitation with that. Is the why, why are you as Chair of the Planning Board saying it has to go to heritage and why are you saying what it's not? Versus me as staff, I'm not, I'm not ever making, taking a vote on approving that.
That's fair.
Application, so, my discretion is my discretion, it's not based on. You get, you know what I'm trying to say?
Absolutely.
I worry a little bit about.
I didn't understand that.
And, and I'll say this, not for nothing, but you have, you have a staffed planning department. I didn't say fully staffed, a staffed planning department, you pay us to do a job, you know, this is well within that.
I think it's reasonably prudent to ask the Chair of the Planning Board or a designee of the Planning Board. If it's appro- if this is something that. If this item needs to go to the Heritage Commission.
And, and so let's be clear, the, 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 the fact is that if it doesn't go to Heritage Commission. That doesn't mean that the town's needs or wants aren't, are not being met.
No.
It, there's an assumption out there that if it doesn't go to Heritage Commission, frogs are gonna have five legs. And, and buildings are gonna look like, uh, 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 forty story monoliths with, with Mickey Mouse ears. And, and that's not true, the, the, this sitting planning board does a huge amount of. Of architectural design and fit and finish and, and a, a lot of things like that. That, 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 that the Heritage Commission can do, so the fact that it doesn't go there, doesn't mean.
It's not.
That, that there's a loss, it doesn't mean that something's not getting done, it doesn't mean that something's gonna get missed. Right? Because the planning board has all those functions, am I right? So, um, planning director nodded yes, so. So, yeah, I, I, I have no problem with, with the Chair or a designee. Um, working with the planning director.
So I'll say, I trust Jake a hundred percent, right?
Oh geez, making it flush.
But.
But. I don't think you should be making a decision for the planning board in that. Which is what I would see that being.
That's fair.
So, that, that's my concern with that.
Understood.
And my other concern is I really don't think we wanna be going down the path of approving colors and facades and windows. In, in this forum, I just think it's gonna make a long meeting, longer.
Well, that was the whole reason of the Heritage Commission, to let it get dealt with down there.
Yep, so, I mean, that's just my take on it, I, I, I think there's some very qualified people here, but, uh. You and I are gonna look at the same building two different ways.
Hundred percent.
You know, and I, I don't know how to deal with that.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, and I agree with you, can we, can we somehow? Know what the original was and what it was changed to? You, you understand?
Yep.
And it comes back to the pink building again.
Yeah.
It was pink, they made it blue.
Correct.
We see a blue building, we think it was always blue, because we don't know any different.
Yeah.
Correct.
Will Open Gov give us a process for monitoring that, that we can all see?
Probably, to some degree, I just. When you're talking about this board reviewing information, I need a little bit more clarity on what that looks like.
Cause I would think that tool, from what I know about that tool, would give us the visibility to see what happens as.
So, yes.
Jack moves down through the process.
It will give you the ability, because, I mean, we had. It will give you the ability because, I mean, we had it to a degree before where we would post the design submission online. Anybody remembers those days?
Sure do.
But um. That still wasn't really doing what you're asking, in that, you know, there's, there can be five iterations of the design review.
Okay, I just, something just popped into my head, which is usually scary at this time of night, but it's not. So how about the Planning Board Representative on the Heritage Commission comes to the next meeting here with a report, the Heritage Commission saw of one, two, three Hardy Road, sorry whoever lives there, um, I'm making it up. And and the applicant did this, and the Planning Board, and the Heritage Commission said this, 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 and this. We're probably gonna see that in a month or whatever, and and now we have a firsthand account of what happened at that meeting. That just popped into my head, um, and it's not dissimilar to what the Town Council does because the Town Council has representatives all over the place.
It's very different though, cause you're ultimately acting on the application.
Right, and we might not remember what you said three weeks ago, and you might be absent that meeting.
Not only that, but.
What do you say? What do you say?
I will, I'll remember.
If Lynn will remember, I will too.
No, you're the, you're the representative.
This is what, this is where I start to caution you at the end of meetings, when you guys like to bring up other business items that aren't noticed and whatnot, where I start to get.
Gonna do tonight.
I start to get nervous where you're starting to talk about projects or applications that we didn't publicly notice.
I think we need to, I think we need to formalize a list of no more than ten questions that the Heritage Commission needs to ask an applicant.
Just those.
Yep. And the applicant needs also to have a set of what the expectation is for them to have with them at the meeting, and step one, do you have your items for the meeting? No, we got nothing to say, have a good night.
And can they also annotate, an- an-.
Annotate.
Annotate, thank you, I was, I was doing metal, an- anodizing.
Aluminum?
Yeah, uh, can they also, um, comment on on what they suggested to the applicant?
Mm-hmm, that should be the requirement.
So you have a checklist, and you have a box underneath it, we said, we want them to put the brick back on the bottom, we want the sign to be two feet shorter.
Correct.
Want the, and all the things that they suggested.
Correct.
To the applicant, that the applicant still is not gonna know his advisory.
No, no, but.
And so, and so.
You should not give that. Go back to the thing where we, you know, the the applicant, they're done, they talk about it, and they go, okay, we'll make that recommendation to the Planning Board. Don't make any changes, we'll make that recommendation, we see it here, we say, look, you, we see, we see your development, it's nice, we think that it needs to be blue, the com- the the com- the Heritage Commission says the same, we kind of agree with them on the blue. You know, is that gonna be a hardship, are you gonna be, oh, we can do blue, no, okay, okay, but don't change the plans, cause that's that's our fundamental problem, right? They're making all these changes, they're coming here, and we're like, why you like this? Well, well, they told us to do it.
Yeah, but then we get stuck in the. Then we're doing like Lynn said, now we're we're deciding colors.
That's why maybe we challenge your questions appropriately.
Some of the time, they'll ask what color does the Heritage Commission like? So they're not making a choice, they're leaving it with the commission to make a choice.
And you should say, we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
Or go to the lookbook.
Yeah, go to the lookbook.
Yeah, go to the lookbook.
Go to the lookbook.
Well, that's why this all needs to circle back to the lookbook.
So as far as, um, my task, if you will.
Good luck.
So, I heard there needs to be a checklist of items to bring, or to provide heritage by the applicant. The commission has asked for that as well, and I agree, that's that's needed.
So the current, the current form needs to be updated, the whole, the form.
I'm not, I'm not there yet.
Sorry.
Sorta.
I thought, I thought that's what he was saying.
I'm saying a checklist of just items.
Oh, 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 oh.
Like, right now, they get the full plan set.
Sample of the.
So are you saying, I I just.
They don't need a full plan set, they need to talk about the architectural.
And I've been reducing that too, I'm like, here's your landscape plan, here's your renderings, and that's all you get, and that's been met with.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why, why are they getting a whole plan, why are they looking at grading and drainage?
So I can, let me take a stab at what that, the items they need to provide looks like. Then it's the list of questions, which is the sheet. Am I taking a stab at that? And you, okay. Then it's the question, I'm unclear still about the staff discretion. And where we are.
I defer to the board, I think it should, I think it should come for a once-over. I can tell you, I've done a fair amount with some other towns around here, asking questions from my own work. And quite often, they say, let me ask the Chair of the Board and I'll let you know. I think it's a.
I don't have, I I don't.
Chair, do you wanna see, do you want the Heritage?
I think Lynn makes a good point, but I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I I I.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with it, but I think it, you have to really use it, use it judiciously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The only thing I see that going wrong?
Because.
Wrong chair.
Well, you better keep nominating the right one.
I I just always think of the potential that can go wrong.
I think that's a good point, yeah. So the Chair or Designee.
Yep. Yep.
And that can be changed. Right, we, that that can.
Absolutely.
Same format that we have now, a different board might say, yeah, we don't wanna do it that way anymore, they could.
Absolutely.
If it's not working out, whatever, but but to Lynn's point, Mr. Chair, if it does go that way, I would suggest error on the side of sending them.
Of course.
Instead of not sending them.
Of course, and I think that's where we should clearly define things that are getting sent.
Yeah.
No matter what, commercial property, getting sent.
Yep.
Industrial property, discretion of the Chair.
Yep.
Residential property, not getting sent, unless there is.
The only multi-family, that's the only closest that we can get to.
Multi-family, I'd say send it to the Heritage Commission. Personally, me as somebody, I'd say, no, that's gonna go to the Heritage Commission. Cause me, multi-family.
I think as we make these changes, they're gonna be things that, like, you can come up probably with your own checklist, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Like, like, okay, multi, like, you just said it, so a- as you see more, you'll say, okay, all these ones need to go there, and you can come up with a process. So I think it's hard for us to nail down a process tonight, we know that the process is broken. Um, I think these are changes that are good in the right direction, and I think, you know, more involvement of the Chair, I think we all agree with that, would be nice, what that involvement is, I don't think we need to put that in stone. Um, but does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm, I wanna get back to what you said, what they, what the Board is seeing, there's zero reason for a full plan set. Architectural.
Architectural landscaping.
And signage.
I think I'm pretty clear on it, I've kinda been.
Yeah, so the elevations, you want them, you want them to see the elevation sheet.
It's gonna be based on what questions are, which have nothing to do with.
Grading and drainage, parking lot design, roadway design.
But I'll tell you, so, this is why the list of questions is very important, because instead of the landscape plan, it's still gonna show parking, so.
I get that, but we're talking landscaping.
I got, I'm, I get it.
Yeah.
But, alright, so I will. I'll take a stab at these lists, checklist, if you will. I'll try and put together some type of language in addition to this proposed language.
I can probably help you with that a little bit.
The discretionary piece, utilizing the Chair or Designee, for what's sent or not.
Mm-hmm.
Just, if I can say it so I don't forget. That's the route we go, meaning utilizing the Chair or Designee for this decision point. That decision has to be made fairly.
Oh, yeah.
Quick.
Give me a call, yes or no?
I'm just saying it so everyone understands, when we get the design review applications, we we have a thirty-day, as you know, I mean, you know, it's a, generally speaking, a thirty-day window. And noticing and whatnot, we try and fit the Heritage meeting in, cause they only meet bi-monthly, and I'm saying things you understand already, but not everyone understands, so.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
Uh, just to.
We can't think about it for a week.
Yeah, I mean.
So there we go.
Are we good?
Yep.
So, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeFrancesco, ask away.
Because I don't know what to do. So, the Town Council is going through a process now for nomination, nomination from, of nomination of applicants for either potential or known vacancies. Process is a little bit different than it has been in the past, and I was not aware that it had changed. Typically, this board has done, um, its own nominations from within, and then sent those suggestions to the Town Council to do what they wish, to either accept or make changes. That said, when I found out about the process, I sent an email, and I'm not gonna embarrass anybody in, online here on camera, I sent an email and did not get a response on what I should do, because as an alternate member, I am interested in being a full member. The application deadline has ended. Alternates never had to apply before, didn't know I had to apply, didn't officially know of what openings there were or there weren't, because there was no communication at all from anybody in the town to any board directly that this was happening. And the Conservation Commission Chair spoke in public comment on the tenth um, about that as well, wondering kinda like, what's going on? Now, in 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 the real world, in the real world is outside of a municipality, because a municipality is a totally different jungle. But outside of municipalities, a typical business, if they had some part-time employees and a full-time position opened up, would say to the part-time employees, hey, want you to apply for that job, there's an opening coming up, you you're gonna have to compete for it, but I want you to apply. That didn't happen, and I don't know, because I haven't gotten an answer from my email yet on what to do or how to do it. Um, I don't know how or what to do to get on the list, or is it too late to be on the list, or can we as a board, because apparently there's gonna be decisions made on December one, which I'm getting a nod that that's true. Um, I I'm not sure the Town Council knows that I'm interested in becoming a full member. And I will say that, um, maybe part of the issue is that my time on the board, my, um, what's it called, my, um.
Tenure.
Tenure, thank you, my tenure on the board isn't up till a year from now.
Yeah, I gotta believe that's it.
But then again, there's, the, there are other alternates on this board that also didn't know whose tenor is up and found out by accident, so. I don't, what do, what do we, what do I do? How do I do it?
So. I was gonna say, Sean, I want, I wanted to defer to you to a degree here before.
So, I'm I'm aware of the situation, um, I made sure that the Chair was aware of the situation, and I will say formally on camera here, that we discussed it with the Town Manager and another member of Town Staff in the room. So there were three other people besides me here to hear this, we are in, within the authority to appoint you onto the Planning Board as a full member, if we so choose as a council, so that is within, I wanna make sure, one, that's a possibility down this route. Um, I think in the end of the day, it just needs to get brought up in front of the council that you are an option, that you've expressed interest. Me as the liaison have now, or, you know, the the ex-officio, sorry, has now heard, you know, your request officially here, and I can relay that back to the Board before we make our deliberations and decisions.
I appreciate that, and I will tell you that I will also be available, I will come to the meeting on December first so that if if anybody has any questions of me, I I will certainly be be prepared to answer any questions or be part of the Inquisition or or not, um, um, and and gladly.
Yeah.
And 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 gladly, so, um, you know, there's a, there's a bunch of moving parts here because officially, I have never been told, nor have I seen anything official that says people are not re-upping or people wanna go up or down. I've heard rumors, I've talked to people who said it's true, but I've never seen, I've never seen any documentation, I've never gotten any emails, I've never you know, I I don't know. I I just think that if there's, if there's a process change, and you, and and you have two important board uh, Chair people saying, ooh, this is a little rough right now, we, we need to massage this a little bit, right? And so, even if we can't fix it this time on December first, we certainly, the the knowledge certainly has to be out there that that it's broken, that this, this process, it ain't right. Alright, the other thing is, there's no hurry. Process started in October for some reason, for a commission that's gonna end on December thirty-first. This board particularly is never not gonna have a quorum, there's, there's plenty of people for a quorum, right? Is is, so, so, there have been times that this, that a Planning Board, a sitting Planning Board wasn't completely full at all, for a year, year and a half.
They weren't full for like two years.
What, two years, whatever, um, and and so, and so, with the alternates that you have in place right now, um, you still have a full board.
Yep.
So if a decision is made the end of January, the beginning of February, in March, you you still accomplish the same thing.
Yes.
You see, so, you know, I wish I had gotten a response back, you know, and I'm talking to you now as a board member to a counselor in public, I wish I had gotten a response back, because my my last thing was, please advise.
So Sean.
I got no advice.
My first question.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
My first question for you would be, traditionally, if there is movement in the Planning Board from an alternate to a full-time member, or vice versa, the Board has made a recommendation on it. We have never made a recommendation on, you know, Jane Doe was an applicant, we would like, we would recommend having her come to the Board. But I think the last one we did would have been Jason, we made the recommendation to the Council to appoint Jason from alternate to full-time, would have been the last one we did, would it be appropriate for the Board to make decisions on, or make recommendations, cause it's not a decision? Would it be appropriate for us to make recommendations to the Council, that you can relate to them for our members that are currently, um, seeking any sort of appointment to, a a change in appointment? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, cause we have done recommendations in the past, and usually we go to the, you know, alternate most senior. And as is like the most experienced, Tony has the most experience, so he would be, I think as far as the Board is concerned, you know, recommendation to move to a full-time slot.
Right, and and so, and just to 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 add to the documentation, right, for for a land use Board that's as complicated as this is, the the most important part of the membership is the alternates. Because the alternates come in off the street typically, um, and 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 have to take time to observe and watch and listen and learn and understand, and 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 do the online classes, which I've sat through hundreds of hours of them, and and webinars and 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 get the RSA book and and try to.
Read it.
And 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 try to memorize it the way Arthur has, and I've been trying for five years to memorize that damn thing, I can't do it the way he does it.
I've I've worked at it for thirty years.
And and know what the town regulations are, and know how they work together, and understand the 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 dance between the applicants and 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 this Board from a, from a, um, uh, from a, um, legal standpoint, right, because i- if we cause the the line item of legal to go up in the town. if we cause the, the line item of legal to go up in the town, we failed, right? We, we failed, so, that's a consideration as well, and so it's very important that people come in to this board in particular, on the level, uh, um, of an alternate, and, and then move their way up.
Yes.
Right, so, there are exceptions to that, obviously, for, for, you know, for other reasons, um, but in general, that, that process needs to go up, and, and, and I think it's important too that, that the process continue, that the chairman of the committees, and I, and I think conservation is, is, is another one that would, that would be similar, makes a recommendation to the town council, here, here's what we're thinking, and the, then you all do what you want. And, and I've seen years where it's been rejected, I've seen years when it's been accepted, that's the process, that, that's how it works, but I think the recommendation um, is important as well, but, um, I, I thank you for your comments, and I, I will make myself available on December first, and then um, th- there's a, there's a lot of moving parts, because you have one going down, you have one that wants to go up, uh, you have one wants to re-up and is not sure exactly what's going on yet either, and, and so.
Do you have, are, are you looking to renew yourself as an alternate, or are you looking to become a full-time member?
I would like to be a full-time member.
So I think we have three recommendations that we need to make to the council. The first one would be, um, recommending Jason Knights from a full-time member to an alternate, recommending Tony DiFrancesco from an alternate to a full-time member to, um, take Jason's position, so they're switching, and then the third would be a recommendation for Ryan from alternate to full-time, I think is the three.
So is that a recommendation with only in consideration of those currently on the board, because there are applicants, and so that makes this a different situation?
I agree. Uh, uh, our, I guess my recommendations would to me, the recommendations come based off of the people that are on the board, cause we've never taken into consideration.
Yeah.
People that are outside of the board, cause this usually happens, and three months later, the application process opens up, and then it's decided on, you know what I mean, it's never this other way around, where we have applicants, and then we're looking to now make or it's like this right now.
Yep.
You know what I mean?
The timing, the timing probably sucks on this right now, but why can't we, uh, make a motion to switch Jason and Tony at the next, uh, council meeting, or or the council's, was it the planning board meeting, council meeting, I mean, but, just do it ahead of time, and then.
We'd have to do it today, because there's no other meetings.
Well, today, yeah, that's why I said I don't think we can do it today.
And we can't do it, we can't do it today. Oh, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have the authority to make a recommendation, that's it.
Recommend to the council.
And I know, that could be.
You don't need authority to make a recommendation.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and I've received the recommendation.
Yes, but I think it would be appropriate to formalize it based off of the board tonight.
The next, yeah, it would have to be tonight, because the next council meeting is December first.
Before our next planning.
For our next meeting, yeah.
We have a quorum, barely. We have, have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
So, uh.
I would theoretically have to all, do, I don't know, cause it's just recommendation, so.
Yeah, it's advi- what we're doing is advisory.
Yeah.
Sound familiar?
He's already on the comparison.
Need to fill out my checklist. So.
You want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so I would like to take all three separately. The first one would be a, I'm looking for a motion, uh, to appoint Jason Knights as, uh, an alternate member to the planning board. So that would be recommendation number one.
Through the end of his term?
Through, it would be through the end of the open alternate term, which would be theoretically yours.
Yeah. For, for clarity, this is a motion to advise?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. A, a re- motion for a re- motion to recommend.
To the town council.
To the town council, that, uh, Jason Knights moves from a full-time member to the alternate position currently held by Tony DiFrancesco.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain, I think?
Yeah, I guess.
Tell you to vote.
You can vote.
Alright, yeah, alright, so I'll vote yes.
Six, zero, zero. You better vote yes.
So, so now I have no position.
Alright, motion, motion to adjourn.
That's well played right there, that's well played.
Yeah, five, zero, one.
Resignation from an existing full member, you should rearrange your folds to make it clear there's vacant alternates that you're recommending.
Oh, now you're confusing me.
Keep going, just keep, you're on a good path.
You know what's going on here.
These, these are just recommendations.
Doesn't matter what I think, it matters.
Sean, you have a full understanding of what's going on here.
Does anyone disagree with the chair member's intent?
No. Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, no, so nobody does, so I think we're good. And I, and I'm well aware of, yeah, your recommendations.
So my, my, and then I would be looking for a motion to recommend to the town council the appointment of Tony DiFrancesco to a full-time voting member of the planning board.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then last but not least, that was unanimous with one abstention being Tony.
No, Sean.
Sean, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, um, and then.
I can, I can vote for myself if you want me to.
Yeah, I would.
I will.
Thank you, so the only abstention being, being Sean, Kelly's over there just, just like, get me out of here. My, my last recommendation would be to appoint, uh, Ryan, or move Ryan from an alternate position to an open full-time position.
I'll make that motion as a chair.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, please.
What's the, what's the open full-time position, right?
Would be yours.
But I'm not, so that would be effective at the end of the year.
Correct, that's why this whole thing is hugely premature.
They're all, they're all, they're all the end of the year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
None of these changes will take effect.
You're gone December first, see ya.
It won't affect until January one anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is, which is why I keep saying there's no hurry.
It would be to take the, the upcoming open position, which, which would be yours.
That'd be fun, yeah.
So I had a motion, I had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye.
So that leaves, so to be clear, that leaves two alternate positions?
Still should leave two alternate positions open.
So there are two, there are two vacancies.
Correct.
What was mine?
Correct.
And what, no, mine.
Yours is Jason's, yours is yours.
There's one alternate vacancy.
Jason's, no.
There's one alternate vacancy, if you do what you just did.
So there we go, we got one alternate.
His, his alternate.
Yeah, what about his, cause he's going, he's going from full-time.
That's the open one. If we accepted your resi- your recommendations, there would be one alternate vacancy.
Okay, alright, so there's one alternate.
Yeah.
My, my full-time becomes an alternate.
Yes.
You're right.
He's leaving his alternate seat.
Yes.
See, look at, you don't think I don't pay attention?
Not bad for ten thirty.
And that's taking into account current members on the board, not a new.
Yes, very clear, very clear.
Well, this means nothing, cause it's a recommendation.
Correct.
It's advisory document only. So, anyway, Sean, I think you have an understanding of how, uh, you have a very good understanding of, of how the planning board feels.
And Sean, I appreciate your, your explanation and the fact that, that you, you had a notion that this was a topic and and, and had a conversation.
Well, I think, and to, to, for the people watching, the reason I think it's important to like call this out and look for some of these things, we've had a lot of turnover in town managers, we've had like, you know, four people holding that spot in the last year. There's a lot of process and a lot of other things, so it's understandable, there's some confusion around this, and I just wanted to make sure it's cleared up, and me sitting on this board and knowing and talking with you guys and knowing the intention of the board, it, I wanna make sure that came through.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and please, and a- also, if you could pass on as well, the fact that, that the, the the current apparent, the current apparent new process needs to be tweaked, right?
Yeah.
Uh, a, um, enough said.
Yeah, yeah, I get that too.
It, it needs to be tweaked, and, and because the, 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 the chair people of the boards need to be consulted before anything really happens, by whomever it is at the time, because that's been a moving target too.
Yeah.
Who, who the person is that you need to talk to is, is kinda all over the place, so, um, anyway, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the old process was usually by October, we got a, uh, we had, chairs of the, of the boys had to report, uh, whose members' terms were expiring. And that went to the, uh, town council or the, uh, you know, administrative person.
I'm not looking to do that, no way.
Then the advertisement went, went out, cause I think it was a couple of years ago, the council changed the, the, the way they do it, but, uh.
Uh, and I just wanna clarify one thing Tony said, I did, I did, I was notified that my position was up.
It's cause your position was expired.
Right, my position was expired.
His isn't expired.
I did not realize, or maybe I missed it, that, that, that there was, there were gonna be interviews, I know I wasn't, didn't need to go for the interview, but I didn't even know that, I didn't realize it was happening so quickly.
Which I don't.
Cause I expected it to be.
Did you apply, did you actually physically reapply?
Yeah, yeah, and then I, and then.
Yeah, see, that's different, it's always just been, hey, you wanna, the fact that the chair didn't know that is problematic.
I knew that he was up for.
No, but you didn't know he didn't reapply.
And, and then I emailed the town council, did you get my email, the town council? I mean, I get a lot of emails to town council, I know you applied, I seen the application. Oh, no, no, so I wrote this, I wrote. Oh, yeah, I did get that email. Yeah, yeah, I was just stating that, 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 it was, it was a nice letter, basically, you know, commending the board and that, that I wanted to move up, basically.
But the incumbents, none of the incumbents were going to be interviewed.
Yep.
So, that was the other.
I just wasn't sure if I was trying to move up, if they wanted to interview me or whatever, and I'll still be at the December first meeting either way, so.
Uh, I found out about it last week, I asked the question because I was expecting to get interviewed.
So.
Cause in the past, the councils interviewed incumbents, so I was just kinda saying where I am.
Right, so at that point, the application period had closed by the time you found out, which is, I found out Tuesday last week, so, um, it's problematic, it's, it, on- once you identify the problem, sometimes it's easy to fix, but at least, at least it's a direction forward, and, um, as long as the council takes the input constructively, not destructively, that, that's not my intention, it's just.
Just to make it work better.
Yeah.
I think your point's well taken, about tenure on this board, you just, you know.
Yeah.
You, you gotta earn your stripes, right? You've been on it for what, six years now?
Three, three di- three different, three different terms.
There was a time of, there was, there was a brief time where he decided it was best enough.
Three different terms, but, but, um, but the, the, yeah, and, and so, the, the po- the bigger point there is for, for, for this type of a land use board, you almost cannot take a person off of the street to be a voting member, because there's just no way for them to understand what's going on. If, if, if nothing else, and Kelly and I have had this conversation, there is no onboarding process.
Welcome to the board, baby.
For the boards.
Best way to learn, feet to the board.
You were my trainer, what do you mean?
Yeah, I had to show you how to turn the computer on.
So let's.
There's no onboarding, so, go ahead.
The planning department does send out all the regulations, all of the notebooks.
True.
Whether or not you all choose to read them.
True.
That's fair. Art, art also, that's fair.
Well, I'll make it sound like the planning staff aren't saying, hey.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm not, I'm saying.
If anything I saw is, if anything I saw it as a.
The towns, the town staff, whoever, whoever's in charge of, of, you know what I'm saying?
I'm saying it for everyone, not just the room.
Well, I'm sa- I'm saying different, because, because there should be an onboarding process, you all in a room together, you got sworn in, here's, here's, here's what's going on, alright, you two, uh, uh, because it's, it's different, you know?
I'll say that goes for more than just this board, I mean, it can go for the council, it could go for, you cannot just show up and go, I'm here, cool, I'm gonna figure out what I'm doing.
It's on the job reading, I mean, I, I started with, uh, showed up the meeting and, uh, they said, gee.
Next thing you knew, he was the chair.
Yeah.
That's cause he missed the meeting.
It took a while.
I guessed the computer password, I was right.
I think, you know, I think, if, if nothing else, Sean, you put everybody in the same room, you have the town attorney come in and say, okay, you're on ZBA, you can't ever talk about this, you're on planning board, you can't ever talk about that. You, you just, little stuff like that, you, you hand somebody a book and you expect them to read it and, and understand it, that's a lot.
Well, I mean, that's like, I don't wanna continue this on longer, but.
Yeah, you do.
The legisla- like, there was a legislation that was attempted to do exactly what you're saying.
Right.
Require.
Yeah, it was.
Specific boards.
Didn't go well.
Training, and it failed miserably.
Well, was it required to do training or require experience?
There's, there's an optional exam you can take.
I had to do eight hours a year just for, uh, condom board, so.
What, condom board?
Good condom.
What?
So that's, oh.
Wow.
With that said, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, absolutely, all in favor, please say aye.
Thank you all.